Okay, I have six oh two. Today is August seventeenth, twenty twenty. And I'll call you the Selma City Council Regular Meeting, located at the Selma City Council Chamber seventeen ten Tucker Street in Southern California. Also via teleconference phone number one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. ID number eight nine four nine three one seven. Four nine six four and the password is nine three six six two. Okay, I need to read a notice to the public before we continue. On March fourth, twenty twenty, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state emergency in California as a result of the threat of COVID nineteen. On March seventeenth, twenty twenty, Governor Newsom issued an executive order in twenty nine twenty, which allows local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public, seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body. Pursuant to executive order in twenty nine twenty, please be advised that some or all of the Selma City Councils will participate in meetings via teleconference. Public participation pursuant to executive order in twenty nine twenty and given the current health concerns, members of the public can access meetings streamed live on our YouTube page. Members of the public may not attend the meeting in person. In lieu of attendance at the meeting, the public can provide public comment verbally for the city council's consideration by calling in the number posted on our agenda. Staff will unmute the public during the public comment portion of the meeting. Alternatively, the public can send correspondence to the city council regarding agenda items by emailing publiccomment@cityofselma.com by five P M. the day of the meeting with the subject line Selma City Council Meeting Correspondence, followed by the agenda item. Or Selma City Council Non-Agenda Item in the subject line. All correspondence that does not relate to a specific item on the agenda will be made part of the official record of this meeting and will be referred to the city manager or other staff for any appropriate action or attention. Correspondence that does relate to a specific item on the agenda will be addressed as appropriate during consideration of that agenda item to which it relates. Please contact the city clerk with any questions by phone at Selma City Hall, phone number five five nine eight nine one twenty two hundred, extension three one zero four, or by emailing using the email address reference above, which once again is publiccomment@cityofselma.com. Uh, with that, before we get our to our invocation, I just want to mention something. I'm sure most of us know about the tragedy that happened at the Reedley Beach shortly after our last meeting, where a young man by the name of Manjeet Singh lost his life. And uh, and just a few days ago, a young woman from Selma Samantha Cruz Pedro also lost her life in that tragedy. So we're going to take a moment of silence to recognize both these people and send our condolences to their family. Mr. Singh, I know was from Fresno, but many of you are aware of prior to moving to Fresno, he was a member of our Selma community who sacrificed his life trying to save others, not knowing how to swim, yet going into the river to try to save those children's life. And then, once again, our heartfelt condolences goes out to the family of Samantha. I know they must be going through much pain right now. So I ask everybody just take a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. Once again, condolences to both families. Okay, now we have our evocation led by Pastor Joe of the Inglesa Antokia or the Church of Ania.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and and City Councilman. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we just thank you for this precious afternoon. We just ask you to take control of this meeting. We just ask you to be with those families, Heavenly Father, that also love their loved ones. We know that they're going through a hard time, Heavenly Father, and we just ask you that you just pour your spirit upon them. And we also ask you to pour your spirit upon each council person that's on this board, Heavenly Father. We just ask you that you direct their thoughts, that you do give them wisdom, and you too, Heavenly Father, lead this meeting so it can glorify you and the citizens of Selma. In the name of Jesus Christ, we thank you and we love you with our our hearts. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Joe.
Okay, everybody please stand with a flag.
Thank you, Councilmember Avalos. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson? Councilmember Treheal? Councilmember Treheal is muted.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Mayor Franco?
Here. Potential conflict of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Seeing that we have no potential conflict interest, we will move on to oral communications. Notice to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issue raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. City clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Caller ending in nine four eight. Your line is unmuted. There are no other calls on the line, Mayor Franco, and I have no emails.
All right, seeing that, then we will move on to our special presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first being our COVID nineteen presentation by the Fresno County Department of Public Health.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me to be here today. My name is Dave Palmerville. I'm the Director of Public Health at the Fresno County Department of Public Health and gosh, we've been working with the city of Selma, you know, over the last few months, and we've really appreciated the relationship that we've been able to build with your city and and the partnership that we have with my staff and and your team has been really, really beneficial. I I will share with you kind of where we're at as a county, and I'm going to be actually doing some of this presentation to our board tomorrow. We are just over twenty one thousand cases of COVID nineteen that have been reported countywide. Most of those cases, there's probably half of those cases already that have that we've either documented, have been closed or are close to being closed, just based on the timeline from the onset of symptoms to where we are today. The we are adding about three hundred cases a day that have been that's been a pretty consistent number that we've seen over the last week. We have been adding most of the the testing positivity rate for Fresno County has been about eleven percent. So we're seeing we're we're doing a lot of testing in Fresno County. We're doing about twenty five hundred tests a day throughout all of Fresno County, and the positivity rate is about between eleven and twelve percent. And so we're continuing to be very concerned about the community spread of this of this illness. And we're also concerned about the essential workforce, in particular, those occupations that require people to be in close settings, where the disease can more easily be transferred from one person to another. We feel like we're getting a little bit of a better handle on the workplaces. And we've been doing inspections. We've had a lot of work with our industries. And so we're focusing now on really trying to reinforce the steps that need to be taken by our families and by our community as a whole to really reduce the amount of gatherings that we're having and those opportunities for more community spread. I will tell you that the hospitalization rates have plateaued, which is very good news. We were seeing steep increases from the latter part of June all the way through the middle of July. We had very rapid increases in the number of people that were hospitalized. But for the first part of August, that's plateaued and started to decline. And so I think at our peak, we had three hundred and eleven people hospitalized with COVID nineteen, and that's down to about two hundred and sixty people. About sixty of those cases are in ICU beds, and so they're requiring higher level of medical support. The the hospitals are filling up with normal there. You know, this is the time of year where they start to see increases in hospitalizations, and so they are, you know, struggling with trying to make sure that they're able to deal with the regular load of patients that they see, and in addition, provide the appropriate support for COVID nineteen. So there's a lot of work that's being done on that side, but we really are encouraged that that we're seeing some drop in the number of hospitalized cases. We've, as I'm sure you're aware, the governor has required any counties that are on the monitoring list, and that's now forty two counties in California are prohibited from opening schools for in-classroom instruction at this point. We've been working very closely with the school districts to ensure that they have the ability to do some certain things like new assessments for special education and parent-teacher type conferences and things like that that may need to happen in person, but very limited activities in person. And all of the instruction is is starting online. We had a you probably heard about a unified support team being pulled together that included a number of state agencies, including the California Department of Public Health, the California Department of Food and Agriculture, the State Office of Emergency Services and others. They came down two weeks ago, and we spent a day and a half with them. We brought in a number of different partners that we've been working with on the COVID response from the beginning, including healthcare representatives, industry representatives, and so forth. And so we're working on a finalizing a plan that'll come out of that convening where we believe we'll be able to take better advantage of some of the state resources to be able to help us get the infection rates under control and to be a bit more unified across the other Central Valley counties. So there's been a lot of work done with regard to that. We really believe that as we go forward, we're going to put more emphasis on our community clinics to continue to do testing, not only for people who are symptomatic, but also for people for surveillance testing. And so we're working with on contracts with them to expand the use of some of the CARES Act dollars that the county has to pay for surveillance testing as well as having the community clinics utilized for the initial medical investigation and some of the contact tracing. So those that those steps will really increase our team. Right now, we have a hundred and eighty people that are we've either hired or that we've reassigned to work on medical investigation. That's the biggest program that we have right now that's working on COVID. That doesn't include the people who are doing the long-term planning and the epidemiologists. These are people that are just making phone calls and doing the medical investigation. We've got a hundred and eighty people that we're utilizing. Some of that workforce has come from our schools. The school nurses have been working with us over the summer. We've trained them up on how to do medical investigation, and they've been a great support. The county use of the CARES Act dollars, I don't have a complete report for that, but we we have been utilizing those resources to pay for the activities of the Department of Public Health through the the response as well as for testing and medical investigations that are occurring. And then we are also signing contracts with community-based organizations that are just getting ramped up to do to do education in some of the more hard-to-reach populations and some of the socioeconomic-challenged populations and some of the ones where we have language barriers or cultural barriers that we believe the community-based organizations can do a better job, and so we're just getting those contracts in place. You know, concerns on the next few months, we really want to get our hospitalization rate down because we know that in September and October, we're going to have the beginning of the flu season, and that always presents challenges for the whole medical system, primary care, hospitalizations, emergency medical services, and so forth. And so that's kind of the double whammy that we're very concerned about of having to be able to take on a flu season as well as having to respond to COVID. So there's some big challenges that we have to get over. The I would I think that our call to action for the city is to continue to do the outreach and education to your community to reinforce those public health preventative measures that we talk about of wearing a mask when you're out in public, of social distancing, of avoiding gatherings at all costs. And even, you know, when we talk about going to the grocery store, going to Walmart, you know, if one family member can go rather than making the family outing, very important to help control the the disease in our community. We want to get our schools back open absolutely as quickly as we can, and that's going to take all of us pulling together to get that to get that accomplished. So I'll close by saying that I was very, very pleased with the the mask campaign that you put together. I mean, to me, that is an award winner. That is a beautiful project you did. I challenged our county to do it. We haven't done it yet. We need to do it. But that that was really, that was well done and was just so impressed with that and so impressed with the work that your team's been doing with our folks to try to get good information to the public and help them make some better decisions. So we're not anywhere near through this. We've got to continue to keep working together to try to get back to some semblance of normalcy. So with that, I'll hold, and and if you have questions, please feel free.
David, I have a question. As you mentioned, we're September, the start of flu season. Is there any protocol that the health departments are going to strategize for as far as identifying who has the flu or is it COVID or is everybody that comes in is going to assume to have COVID? COVID and how are you going to identify or can you identify it's just the flu only?
Yeah, so really a good question. So one of the things that we're going to do is really double down on our campaign for people to get flu shots. And we will also require that anybody that works in the medical in hospitals will be required to to have flu shots as well. But we really want to get that vaccine out there and as a first line of defense. And so that's that's very critical as we go forward. We want to make sure that that as we, when somebody tests for what goes in there, maybe symptomatic, it's going to be very confusing to discern whether it's COVID or the flu. There is a a rapid test that has been developed for it's it's not as accurate as we would like it to be that we hope will be more widely available in clinic sites to be able to try to confirm if somebody is positive for COVID or confirm if they're positive for the flu. And I think some of the manufacturers are actually able to do that in one test, so they'll be able to determine flu or COVID in the clinic setting. But that's going to be very tricky for our medical providers to try to make sure that they're able to figure out what whether somebody has the flu or COVID. There'll be a lot more dependence on testing.
Yeah, I have a question for him. You know, not too far from here, we have a, it's called the Selma Swap Meet, but it's part of Kingsburg Boundaries. What have you guys done in that area as far as educating those people in that and the swap meet? Have you been out there educating the the owner and the vendors?
Yeah, we have been in touch with the owner and the vendors. And we, you know, we didn't shut that down, the swap meets, because they they are relied upon for some food, and there are some people that buy produce and so forth at those, and so we allowed those to continue to be open, but they the the booths had to be spread out. I know we've had some public complaints about gatherings there and tried to go back out and educate the owners as well as the operators, but we've been in contact with them. I haven't gotten a report recently of how that's been going. It is an outdoor activity, so it is less risky than other things. But people still should be wearing masks when they're when they're shopping there, and they should be very cautious about being in close contact with people.
Reason I'm asking that question is, you know, when they when they go to those events, big events, they should maybe have a sign posted saying, you know, masks are required in the swap meet. Because we're doing it everywhere in our community. And as far as, you know, every place we go, Walmart or grocery stores or the drugstore, where there's there's a sign on that saying, hey, masks is required before you come in. And I know we're not doing that over there. Is there a plan to do that?
All right, let me check on that. I think that's a really good idea. I'll take that back to my team and see that we should be able to get that done.
Question for David. I got two questions, actually. I saw where Santa Cruz County is about to be taken off the governor's watch list. What positivity rate do we have to have to qualify to be taken off the watch list? And two, what's being done for the outreach program for the farmworkers who are getting ready to go into harvest? So the folks who are doing this hard work and putting food on our table can be protected from from this disease.
Yeah, great question. So that on the first one, the the positivity rate needs to be eight percent or lower. And and in combination with that, the case per hundred thousand over a fourteen-day period needs to be less than one hundred. And so what that turns out to be, if Fresno County is a million in population, that means that we can have a thousand cases over a two-week period. And that's about seventy-two cases a day. So we haven't been at seventy-two cases a day since gosh, probably about the first of June. So we're we are probably upwards of two hundred and fifty cases a day, looking at that fourteen-day rolling average. So that the positivity rate below eight percent and the cases per hundred hundred thousand below a hundred. Those are the two metrics that the state's going to really be looking at. The other piece that they'll look at is declining hospitalization and available ICU beds. We've been okay on both of those. The ICU bed is more concerning, but certainly the declining hospitalization rates has been has been positive. And Santa Cruz County's kind of been on the bubble for a while. So they really have not seen the the pressure from some of the the outbreaks that we have seen in Fresno County. And then the second question. Remind me.
The outreach for the farmworkers.
Oh, thank you. Outreach for farmworkers. Yeah, so when we talked with the, when we've been working on this, we've been trying to do education through a number of to get information out to the farmers, the labor contractors, the transportation companies, as well as the the farmworkers themselves. And so there have been, there there's kind of a patchwork of strategies. When we talked with the state two weeks ago, we we agreed we need a more unified program that that educates at all levels, again, the farmer level, the farmworker, labor contractor level, the transportation, so the CalVans type programs, and then also at the farmworker directly. And so we're working with California Department of Food and Agriculture with our egg commissioner, pulling together a work group that has that has the farm labor represented through the California Farm Worker Foundation and some of the other organizations that represent labor, as well as some of the labor contractors, help get the education piece out. A lot of work that needs to be done there on on education, on prevention, and and making sure that we have supplies to them like masks, and we've provided thousands of masks to that to that population, both the surgical-type masks as well as the pesticide N ninety-fives and then more more also the cotton facial coverings. So there's a lot going on there and a lot more that needs to be done. I know that we're working with the California Department of Food and Agriculture to do a program that that will allow for isolation and quarantine supports to be provided for farmworkers who test positive, allowing them to be able to have a a separate place to be able to go. Unfortunately, it's going to be away probably from their community because it will probably be a hotel. But it would be hotel rooms available as well as supports, whether it's food or transportation supports while they're quarantining. I think our focus really needs to be on education, on prevention, making sure that they have good hand hygiene, that they have facial coverings, that they know if they're sick, that they need to stay away, and those types of things. So there's a lot that's going on there and a lot more that is going to be done with regard to farmworkers.
Go ahead, John.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
So going on that same question in regards to the farmworkers, I know I know you've been giving us information in regards to every aspect in regards to help helping and preventing for the farmworkers, but can you give us a sense in regards to the financial aspect in the county, what you guys back in May or in March, what you guys started looking at in best in regards to investing to give that information out to the farmworkers because I think that's probably where where we're getting our high our high numbers because back in maybe in March, April was the time when they started actually picking and working and and I think the the word you you hit it exactly that we do need to spread the the word. But what what are we looking at? What's the financial looking? What's the numbers look for in the county of Fresno? And spreading it out, you know, through Kingsburg, Selma, Arlier, Fowler. Does can you have those numbers or are we are we looking at that or?
Are you are you asking about?
I'm talking about the financing numbers, the amount of the budgeted numbers that are going to be going to the county that are going to be spread individually to the cities. Or are they? Are you guys having that kind of conversation? Because I mean, there are some cities that have a very diverse group that really outweighs one of the other. And our our we can take into account our city and doing our research and my research. We've seen that there's a lot of people in our group that actually transport to Dinuba, Reese Foods, transport to Kingsburg, and I mean, where where can we go to as legislators to go and ask for the funding or ask to help and how can we assist you as a legislator to go and how to do the outreach?
So I think those are great questions. I think that the the one is is there have been additional supports provided through the CalFresh program for lower-income people that have that are on CalFresh. And and there have been additional supports that are provided for Medi-Cal population that are that are offered through the Department of Social Services. So taking full advantage of those resources is probably the first thing that needs to happen. There there are some income wage replacement dollars that are available if if somebody has to quarantine and the they can they they can have wage replacement for up to fourteen days while they're quarantining. I I'm not sure of the exact mechanics of that program, if the employer pays it or if the state pays it like a worker's comp program, but they can apply for wage replacement. I know that there has been some fear that, you know, applying into a government program may cause problem for people who may have immigration status issues. And so the county, that's where the county is trying to work with our community-based organizations. We've done a five-million-dollar contract with them to start to identify not only isolation and quarantine supports, but also education for prevention. And so we've just signed those contracts in the last two weeks or so, and the Economic Opportunity Commission is the one that'll be running that program.
Yeah, and I was and I was hoping that we would be, you know, in more of a sense of that that's the financial part, but like you said, the educational part's more important one. We know that in our town, we get a lot of calls on Sunday when they're having three thousand people in Kingsburg. And I mean, I think that would be a fantastic place where we can hand out a brochure or even have somebody to go and tell them if they're not wearing a mask to put a mask on. or even have somebody to go and tell them if they're not wearing a mask to put a mask on.
Yeah.
Those are those are really um we gotta find the areas where we're. I was hoping we could hear that, but okay.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Is there?
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you Pastor Joe. You have a question?
Yes, I I just wanna piggyback off of the question of John to you. Um so I I guess the 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 question I I wanna ask, is there any funds for the cities um directly to be able to do campaigns to uh do preventions, um education? Is there any funds available to any cities in the county just to be able to do that um without, you know, without the county uh uh leading that if the I guess if the cities can lead the their own prevention programs?
Yeah, I I I'm not exactly sure. I know that the CARES Act had funding for city, I don't know what the distribution was for cities. I know that the county did get a very large uh uh dollar amount and a lot of that is going for, again, the staff that we've hired or that we are paying to do a lot of the work and laboratory testing and all of that. Um I know that cities did receive some dollars. I'm not sure how that allocation went. Um but but uh certainly any of the education materials that we've developed, we will make available for the city and we would take also uh if if the city wants to partner on a specific ad campaign or to target a particular population, uh we would be happy to work with you to make that happen. So uh I don't know, Teresa or uh Raina may be able to answer the CARES Act question for the cities. I'm not sure where that's at.
Cause a lot of the fear of the of the um cap um farmer workers is that they they won't wanna tell people that they're sick or they they try to, you know, go through the symptoms and try to just kinda deal with it, but they're contaminating other people, so we gotta educate them and there's a there's a big factor that which is the the language factor. And and so therefore they're 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 just thinking, well, it's just like a, you know, a code and you know, I could get over it and and we're seeing people being hospitalized and being, you know, severely uh um while just suffering the 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 COVID nineteen because of that and then spreading more because of that. So if there was some fundies for that, so we can prevent that, I think that's a a great, you know, approach that we could take on that.
Yeah, we we've um the the contractors that we're using, uh including the Economic Opportunity Commission, we also have dollars going to Central La Familia Building Healthy Communities uh and a few others at um that are targeting Hispanic workers. So we are using the community-based organizations to do that. But if there's if there's a specific project that the city wants to work with us on, we'd be happy to look at that.
Thank you.
Any last questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there was the question about the CARES Act funding.
One more question.
Can you hear me?
You know, first, I thank you for coming and give us education. And the other part, you know, as far as the uh the migrant workers, I call them migrant workers. And good point made. They won't they won't come forward and and say, hey, I'm sick. But I think, you know, I think as the uh contractors, if you guys develop a plan as far as uh when they get in the van, take their temperature, you know, it's called a safeguard, you know, I I'm throwing it out there to you guys, okay? Yeah, I think, you know, it's it's called containment. I call it containment. So um, you know, we we have to think outside the box sometimes. And like Scott says, you know, these people put food on our table and without the food, we won't get very far. As far as healthy, we'll probably get up getting sick, you know, too. But uh there's some issues out there and I think working together as a team and getting ideas. Uh we're doing it already. We're working together. Yeah, so but I thank you. Once again, I thank you.
Thank you.
Uh City Manager, I think you want to make a comment on this on this subject?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. The CARES Act funding that the city received, the allocation is three hundred thousand dollars. That'll be paid out in six installments of approximately fifty thousand dollars. And um the state has been uh we've been provided some information on how we can go ahead and file for that. That um paperwork is due by September fourth. Public safety is a presumed benefit, um and that is one of the areas that uh the state really urges utilizing the funding for, and that can offset some of the general fund. Uh appreciate our partnership with the county as well. Thank you, Dr. Palmerville, for being here this evening. Uh we have been meeting with him and his staff twice a week uh and working very closely. I appreciate the uh extending the offer for us to do um more targeted partnered campaigns. That is fabulous. We're looking forward to having the CBOs in our community. I think that will really help with some of the more challenging um populations to serve. I make sure we're getting information out in languages that everybody is is comfortable with and uh the team here has been uh really working closely with the county. We do appreciate the support.
Yeah, it's been very great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you for your time, Dr. And uh well, hopefully everything gets is just we're on the road to improvement, but we know we all have a lot of work ahead of us.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will close that presentation and move on to our second presentation, which is just an update on our our planning updates. I believe this is uh Kira.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh included in your packet this evening is a spreadsheet that includes our current planning projects. I'm gonna try to share my screen at this time to bring it up. And hopefully everyone will be able to see it. There we go. Can everyone see this spreadsheet? It's probably gonna be easier to view um in your packet or on your computer, but in this case, I just wanted to give a brief overview of what the planning department is doing at this time and let you know that I'm available to answer any questions that you have regarding these specific projects or development in general in the city. So this spreadsheet takes the timeline for this is from when QK started as your contract city planner. A lot of these projects were already in the pipeline when I became your city planner, but we have moved through the backlog. So anything that is highlighted in blue, um let's move it up here. Anything in blue is gonna be a completed project. Anything in gray has been withdrawn and anything that's unshaded is an active project. That's the key at the top there. So we have in total, we have eight conditional use permits that have been approved, ten site plan reviews, uh one proposal for annexation and five maps. And maps include lot line adjustments, tentative subdivision maps and tender parcel maps. And that encompasses all of the blue projects that you see highlighted. Again, anything in gray, um they were listed in the project list that I was given when I came on board. And by calling applicants to find out if they were still interested or presenting the applicants with what the requirements were or um materials that were needed to complete their application, they either decided not to move forward or did not provide that information to the date. So our first um project that's still active at this time is a site plan review. It's located at Highland and Rose and the proposal was brought forward by Dwight Nelson for an auto body shop. They will have used auto sales as well as part of that use. The formal application was submitted this month in August and planning will be reviewing it and processing it internally as a site plan review is a non-discretionary action. So we will not, this column is for hearing, so we will not have a hearing date, uh but the application has not been completed yet. It is still in process. The next active project that we have on file is for an annexation, pre-zone, general plan amendment and subdivision map. This is located on the southwest corner of Nebraska and Highland. There's actually two property owners involved in this application, so Floyd Hinesley and Baldev Joe San are the property owners. They have proposed a mixed use development. There's commercial uses, single family and multifamily residential uses proposed. This project is in the very early phases. We don't have any technical studies available yet for Sequo, so the applicants are aware that traffic studies, um air impact assessment, cultural resources, those types of background reports are needed before we can move forward with Sequo. And the project wouldn't move forward until our sequel is completed. The next one uh is actually on your agenda this evening. So this is a general plan amendment and zone amendment. It's for one particular pro- property owned by Mr. Nagra, but it is a city-initiated project in an effort to come into compliance with our to bring our housing element into compliance. So hopefully we can put a completed date there of this evening and then that one would be changed to blue very soon. The second spreadsheet that we have here are long-term ongoing projects that are all in various stages of approvals. Some actually have been approved, but steps haven't been taken and moved forward, such as the Amberwood specific plan. So the specific plan, you know, to plan the area in general has been approved, but the actual applications and developers for the projects haven't come forward yet. So we are very close with Lennar. They have been in talks with us in regards to a um seven hu- two hundred and seventy-one lot subdivision. And the last contact we had with them was July twenty-third. And I let them know what their sequel requirements were, which are none because they are in compliance with their specific plan that was already approved uh with sequel already completed for that. And so we're just waiting on a application from them to move forward with that. They already have sewer plans approved and they're well aware of the application process and what needs to happen to move their project forward. We have Selma Crossing. They have been mostly quiet since I've been yours contract city planner. We have had other approvals in the area that they have reached out to talk with us about. Uh for instance, we had a service station with the ABC permit come forward in last month's planning commission that they took note of to make sure that the traffic impacts to um Mountain View were not were not would not impact their project. So they're still they're still around. We just don't have any formal applications to move forward with on that project. And for Selma Grove, they completed an addendum to their EIR to revise their traffic mitigation that has been turned into us by Odell Planning Group and QK has reviewed it. We do have a couple comments on it, uh but that one is very close to moving forward. So once the sequel is approved, the applicant could bring forward an application for site and review if they wanted to um build something that's consistent with the specific plan and the zoning and general plan designation in place, but they also would need an annexation application or annexation. So those, it's close, but um still formal applications required to move forward. For the Gill Annexation, we did send them a letter back in May to let them know the steps they needed to take in order to move forward with their project. We have reached out to the applicant and I'm sorry, the property owner and their representative a few times since then, including uh just last week, Theresa emailed them and we haven't had a response back um lately. But we know that they are moving forward. We're just not sure at what pace. The last project I have listed here that's active would be a Raven between Raven and KB Homes. So Raven is the property owner. KB Homes would be the developer. In this case, they haven't submitted any formal applications, but we have had a number of meetings uh mostly to focus on how the sewer infrastructure would be repaid, the details of a CFD and in this, at this moment, the the two two parties are doing their due diligence to come to an agreement on the purchase price of the land if KB chooses to purchase it. And V five is approved, so that is all I have as far as active projects go. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Kira, I have a question. In regards to the 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 long-term projects, the ones here that we just spoke on this page. Now that uh was it SB seven, I got it right here, seven forty-three has come into effect about the vehicles mile miles traveled. Is is that going to, is that gonna affect these in any manner?
So if they have Sequo approved already, then they can move forward as they are. So for instance, uh for Amberwood with Lennar, they came to us asking that exact question. And we reviewed their submittal and compared it to the specific plan and the sequel that was done for the specific plan. And we were able to come to the conclusion that as long as they are consistent with the specific plan, the sequel is already in place and they can move forward. So that specifically wouldn't be uh affected. Anyone who still has sequo to do, they would be subject to the new requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Kira, I have a question. I know I had requested this um spreadsheet, I think, when I first got on. But what I'm looking at is maybe I'm just not clear what I requested. I'd like to see like these plans here or the gray that's no longer valid or they've been denied or withdrawn. Why don't we just remove that completely? And put the top three major projects that are in place and going and are moving forward and given us all this stuff that um has been denied or not completed or withdrawn. And then the white, there's only three of them that look like are moving forward. And then the last page are the ones that have been long-term, which we understand that. But just to simplify it, there's just some questions on here like we mentioned before, and I don't know if I could say it, but the clothing store, what happened to them? They're not even on here.
Is that a so in terms of this list, it's a current planning entitlement project. And as far as tenants changing changing hands, they the only thing required for that would be a business license. So there might be tenant improvements that would go through a building permit process. But anything that is existing with a permitted by right use wouldn't be reviewed by planning except with a building uh I'm sorry, except with a uh bu- business license application. So this is a list of planning entitlements. Um I I would say and uh for the clothing store, we actually don't have a business license application yet at this point. And there are definite public um privacy laws regarding when some information is public and when it's not. So we don't share, for instance, I have what's called PRC or um like a preliminary project review. None of those projects are listed on these either because they're technically not uh public information.
Okay, and and then on the second page, you have your chicken shack. And then on date completed, you have seven twenty-seven and twenty.
And that is the planning process was completed. So the this is reflecting just that planning portion. And so that was the date that their conditional use permit was approved.
Okay, maybe if they if she can add like on the last page or next to it, date of completion or something that'll reflect their date of opening, maybe that'll be a little, it wouldn't be so confusing. A little more, it'd be much clearer for us versus the planning part.
Okay, um so we could prob- we could look at something and adding another column, like now it goes to the building tenant improvement phase. So you wanna know where it goes next after planning?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the next steps is it's possible for sure.
Okay.
I have a I have a question.
For example, Chicken Shack has tenant improvements that will require a building permit. But the application here, I don't know why it says SPR, it needs to say CUP, but the application that went through planning was actually the the sale of alcohol. the sale of alcohol and it was approved by planning commission. But the next steps to be in operation would be their tenant improvement. So their, the official date would probably be when the certificate of occupancy is issued. And that's issued by the building department. I, I heard another question.
Yeah, I have a question. You know, when I look at these things, you know, and I look at things in the past when I was on the council, you know, when we started, when I got on here, uh, some of these issues here, you know, I, now these issues here on the, on these items here, are we, are we finding a way to streamline these issues, not micromanaging, you know, under a microscope to get these things up and running because, you know, I'm an old school person. I get, I want to get these things in a basic alignment. And that way the city can get money right away from tax interments, you know. So are we doing those diligent work and by kind of streamlining these issues and, and helping them, you know, not so much under the microscope, say, hey, you gotta do this, do this, and get nitty-gritty, you know, stay with the basics ideas and move forward on these issues. Are we doing that?
Yes. So all of our planning review is strictly based on the code. And that's non-discretionary on my part. So all I can do is decide whether the submittal is in compliance with the code or not. If it's not, then we can suggest changing the general plan designation or the zoning, providing a variance request. And then the planning commission or city council can make those allowances that I as the city planner can't make. I will say that I do have quite a number of planners behind me. So anytime we get an application, for example, Chicken Shack, we, we got that application three weeks prior to planning commission. And we got the notice out the day we got the application and we put it on the very next agenda. So if we somehow have a backlog, I have additional planners behind me that can help me write staff reports. For instance, self-help, they were under a tight timeline. So, so I had my counterpart write their staff report so that we didn't have any backlog. And another example of, of, you know, how we're trying to move things forward is that we do have multiple different options under the code. So for example, the Nebraska Apartments, I'm going to try to get to it up here, I think. That was something brought forward by Nick Sahoda that was under process. I want to say it had a nineteen or an eighteen project number. Not seeing it this, oh, no, that's why. Here we go. So it was actually a two thousand eighteen project that hadn't moved forward because the proposal that they had brought forward didn't meet the code. So we were able to, I suggested to Mr. Sahoda that he could actually just do a lot line adjustment and build the single family homes that are permitted by right. And also an accessory dwelling unit for each home. So that was able, that was something that moved him forward very quickly because the alternative was a general plan amendment, a rezone, a variance. There, you know, there would have been a number of entitlements that would have taken a lot of time and a lot of money. But with the lot line adjustment, he was still able to get the number of units that he wanted, but he had a simpler process to get there. So we try to use the code, you know, the code doesn't have to be a hindrance. It can, we can use it to our advantage as well.
See, now when you, when you tell me there's some backlog issues, that's telling me that the projects are slowing down. It's not, it's an R N because we're not, uh, we're not either streamlining and we're not helping them in a diligent way to get them up and running, you know, that, you know, I have a concern there, you know.
We, actually, we, we don't have a backlog. I think she was sharing examples of how we try to show, avoid that.
She said backlog to us, you know.
Right. She said backlog, but how we're trying to avoid it.
Okay, you know, I, I want it, I want, okay, we'll get it clear. We'll get, thank you. No, that's why the issues are.
So, and there was quite a backlog when I came on. There were at least fifteen projects on a list that, you know, for example, this two thousand eighteen project, there's, actually, there's multiple two thousand eighteen projects on this list and I, I came on board in May of two thousand nineteen. So these were projects that had seen multiple planners that hadn't been able to move forward and we were able to clear the backlog. So any project that you see that's an active entitlement has been applied for recently, within the last few months. And so anything that we can take to hearing, we take right away. For example, at the Chicken Shack and we had a service station, that one took us, excuse me, two months to get to hearing because it was a site plan review. So we needed to have the two weeks necessary to route that project. There's, there's two things we need to follow when we get an application. Number one is our municipal code and number two is the California Environmental Quality Act. So Sequo is something that is a large liability and it's something that's outside of our control. So we do our best to manage risk. There, there are some projects where we can move them forward as quickly as we can with the, with the hope that they don't get challenged. So there's always a level of risk that you have to manage because if you, if you do a full environmental impact report, for example, that significantly increases your timeline. Whereas if you can move a project through with a mitigated negative declaration or just an addendum to an existing EIR, that moves projects through much quicker than, than would normally be required as well. And those are some tools that we've utilized since, since we've been the planner here.
So referring to Councilman Avalos, what he was saying about making the operations more efficient in planning and also as well as a couple of candidate planning commissioners put on their application. Where are we in the process of finding a full-time planning, uh, person, a planning expert? Do we have someone that we're looking at in our planning department? To be in charge of the planning department? Have we found someone in the community development department or are there candidates being interviewed? Where are we in that process?
So, um, we went through and did a planning manager recruitment and were not successful. Then we went ahead and we increased the salary and the requirements and opened up a community development director. Our recruitment went through a recruitment process and then that did not work out. So as we discussed in the budget session, we did open that up, that position up on an open-ended recruitment. So that when we do identify a candidate that has the right meets the criteria and is available, we can come, uh, come to you and make a budget adjustment to, to move forward with that. So that's where we're at with that.
From what you've been saying, city manager, that would actually help the efficiency of our planning and building department. Right? To have a community, full-time community development director. So that should definitely be, be a priority as I think the council specified during the budget. Also, I think we specified during the budget, Mayor Protem Gera especially. It's important to have this, this information in front of us frequently.
Yes.
I think we talked about every two weeks or every four weeks.
I think we landed on once a month.
Yeah, and I think it's important to have these honest assessments and maybe to make sure that the spreadsheets are a little more, a little less daunting. Um, I agree with the mayor pro tem in terms of the, the withdrawn ones. Just get rid of them because I mean, you know, they're, they're really things we don't need to waste our time on at this point. If they come back, then they can come back. But maybe streamline it and maybe add another column for the completion expected dates or where it goes from here so that we can have a practical application of what happens after the planning process is completed.
Good recommendations. We can do that.
Thank you.
We'll note those.
Thanks.
So this, uh, I have a question. In regards to this report, and just in my take, since joining the city council, I know that we've, myself and all my colleagues have echoed the concern of, you know, the bottlenecking and, and the engine, and anyone that's coming into our office and saying, hey, we, we don't have this and we're not getting this and in looking at this report, it's, it's, it's a bit concerning because in looking at this report, that means we are doing a hundred percent well. This is a completed report. This is not a true picture of what I get the sense when I'm talking to developers or people out in the community. This is the reason why we need to go back and make sure we find someone like Councilmember Robertson was saying in regards to finding a planner that has someone that, that has some intake in our community. These reports can, these reports can make you look like a hundred, a hundred percent great. But at the end of the day, when we talk to developer and they tell us that they're still having problems because of communication that will, or because they feel that they're being talked down to or because they feel that there's things not being answered. Those are the questions I have. I represent my community and I want those answers. This report can do, can look like a hundred percent, but we need to make sure if this report is true to the team, then we have no problems and we should be, we should be building within a year. So Mike, it's not a question to, Kira, it's a question to the city manager. Since the beginning of our last budget talks, we talked about appointing and finding a director or a planner. I know that fully budget, we rec- you recommended that we would go away from that and we would stick with the consulting for now, but we need to visit that because it's really important to have someone that understands our community and is living and is here eight hours a day. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm not, um, I have nothing in regards to this report. It's, it's, it's informational. Uh, we can get that, you know, but the thing about it is, is that we need to start, we actually need to plan for our future and we need to find a planner. It's very important. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Trahil. We are indeed recruiting for the community development director.
Okay, if there's no other questions. All right. Thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
Okay, before moving on to the consent calendar, the city manager wants to make a clarification on item E as in Edward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The clarification is that this contract is actually three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars as opposed to the two thousand four hundred and fifteen that is noted in the staff report. Um, that is because we do have a slightly upgraded membership in the, uh, this employer relations consortium. And that upgraded membership allows us access to workbooks and digital format as well as more than two hundred sample forms, model policies and checklists that can be used as templates. So that's a valuable tool for the city and I just wanted to make that note on the consent calendar. Thank you.
With that, we will move on to our consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar, consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have the, have any item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council then can approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Is there any items that anybody would like pulled?
Like to remove item one E.
I'd like to remove.
He, he is in Edward.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, did you want something removed as well?
G.
All right. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve A through F with exclusion of E and G.
Okay, we have a motion to approve A, B, C, D and F, I believe is what you said. Okay. Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Trahil?
Hi.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes. Okay, uh, item E first, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, so I saw where this is the agreement to approve the contract for special services between the city and the employment practices attorney. Right?
Yes, and, and this is through RMA, so, but we paid LCW directly, correct.
So my question here would be, could we get as part of this contract a seminar for the city council? I'm aware that, you know, the city has to have sexual harassment training every twelve months. Maybe due to COVID, that's been postponed, but could we get that training? And also could we get this training for all the commission members as well, on the city commission members as well, under this contract?
We do, um, yes, we do receive a certain number of training days via this contract. And we also have access to online trainings. So I, I believe we can certainly do the online training for the council and commissioners as since right now with COVID, that would probably be the most conducive way.
Okay, so that's a yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
No question.
That's, I'm good with you.
You have a question on this, Sean?
Yeah, uh, in regards to this, uh, this contract, is this the only firm that we, or do we have any more firms?
We use LCW for our human resources special counsel and we have a contract with them. This one is specifically with the RMA through our insurance in order for them to provide these additional services. So there are two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what we'll do now is move on to item G.
Okay. I just have one for the register, page twenty-three. And it is check number seven, five, six, six, five for Tuttel and McCloskey general legal fee. And that's for eight thousand one hundred and sixteen. Who are they and can you tell me what they did or what service they provided?
Their service be provided for the Personnel Commission hearings.
I'm sorry.
It's for the Personnel Commission hearings. And some of the research is being done for that process.
So there, are they an outside legal firm? That's not contracted specifically with Selma?
They are a legal firm that is contracted with the city for the Personnel Commission. And, you know, that goes also to Councilmember Trahil's last question. So we do, when we do have Personnel Commission hearings, you have to have another attorney. It cannot be your HR attorney that's representing the city or the city attorney. So this is an attorney specifically to serve the Personnel Commission.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of items. Page twenty-two, seven, five, six, one, four. CID Rockwell Pond fee. Is that our last payment as a city for Rockwell Pond?
No, we actually have another one still.
Another annual payment.
That is going to be our third, I believe, of the four. So we have one more next year. Yeah.
And then Rockwell Pond will be.
That'll be the complete payment of the two hundred thousand, correct.
Then, um, seven, five, six, three, four. The bottom jam services, green and red lights. I mean, it's a small item, but what's that for?
Green, I believe that's for traffic lights.
Traffic, like replacement for traffic lights?
Correct.
Then at the bottom, seven, five, six, five, one, response analytics, Simon software implementation is five grand.
It's new, um, software that we're utilizing for ambulance service.
Then the next page, twenty-three, seven, five, six, five, five. Saving All Children Family Healing Center, Family Healing Center Service for a thousand.
Let me check one out for you. That is for It's our annual MDIC account renewal. It is, is a service provided to the PD department for when they needed family health center services for some of the things they do.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more questions on the check register?
I make a motion to approve items E and G.
A second. Uh, actually, uh, I need to request, we're gonna, is there a to approve these individually? So can I get a motion to approve item E first?
Go move.
One second.
Okay, roll call please for item E.
I think there was a tie. I will give the tie to Mayor Protem Gera. Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahil?
No.
Mayor Franco?
Yes. Okay, and do I have a motion to approve item G?
Make a motion to approve item.
A second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahil?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
All right, yes. Okay, um, the council doing good or do you need a break? Should we continue?
I had a three minute break, could we get a break?
Yeah, we'll take a, uh, four minute break and we'll reconvene in four minutes, everybody. See this, in case I get out of hand. Okay, is everybody ready? Okay.
Yes.
All right, I have, uh, seven, nine, 19, we're reconvening the Selma City Council meeting. Uh, we are moving on to our public hearing, uh, agenda item number two. Consideration of a resolution approving a general plan amendment and zone change number 2020 dash 0009 to rezone approximately 9.1 acres from the R17 zone to the R4 zone and amend the subject area's general plan land use designation from medium density residential to high density residential. I believe this is Kara again.
Eric with Rincon Consultants.
Good evening, uh, mayor and, and members of the city council, Eric Bonber with Rincon Consultants. Um, we've been working on this project for a while now and this is the, hopefully the last step. We, uh, developed an R4 zone district for the city of Selma and now identified at least eight and a half acres to rezone to this R4 zone district. And this will bring your housing element into compliance, which then will allow you for, uh, getting your SB2 grand of 160,000 dollars. So we identified this property, uh, Mr. Nagro was, um, volunteered to, um, participate in this, this process. So it's a city application, but Mr. Nagro will, um, you know, benefit from this by rezoning his property to the R4 zone district. The, the location is behind the Sikh Center, um, off of, uh, State Route 43. So, um, basically that's the project, um, and as well as part of this project, the general plan amendment will bring the, this property into conformity with the general plan. The current zoning is, is actually inconsistent with your current general plan. Um, we did the initial study and, uh, supplemental negative declaration did not identify any, um, environmental issues with the project. And so we can move forward with, with approval. The planning commission approved this project or recommended it for approval to the city council at their last, um, hearing. So with that, I'll turn it over if you, if anyone has any questions on this project.
I have a question. So if, um, all this does is rezones the land, if the owner plans, if Mr. Nagro plans on doing something with it, putting in a new building with a number of units, that would still have to go through the entitlement and the planning process. Is that correct? Does it mean it's automatically approved?
No, it, you know, it can be that he could do a project that would be a, considered a by right use so that it would go through, I think the site plan review process to make sure it's con- conformance with all of the city's requirements for that. There's some other issues that would be involved with any development here, providing, um, sewer and water access, um, you know, availability to the site and getting public access to Rose Avenue there. So some of those processes may or may not, um, require additional approval beyond just, uh, the site plan review.
Is there a project planned for that area right now?
Mr. Nagre has shown interest in developing the property, but he has, he didn't have any plans at this point in time. That was just communications with me.
Any more questions before opening to the public? Okay, uh, seeing this is a public hearing, I am now going to open it to the public who wishing to comment on agenda item number two. City clerk, is there anyone wishing to comment on this item?
Caller ending in nine, four, eight, your line is unmuted. Is there anything that you would wish to speak to the council regarding this agenda item? Mr. Mateo Rodriguez, is there anything that you wish to speak to council regarding this agenda item?
Not this item, thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only callers I see.
And no emails, correct?
And no emails, that is correct.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comment portion and return it back to council. And once again ask, uh, before I ask for a motion to prove, is there any council members have any further questions?
Just one, the, um, the remainder of the acreage of the tract is, is designated as park. What kind of, what, what, how, what, what can it be developed? Or what can it be used for in the future?
Designated for, uh, you know, a public park, so whatever, um, is consistent with that designation.
So with the owner with that, a commercial building or a, a, a dense, a dense unit residential building, they could actually put a little pocket park there?
Yes. Yes, that would be the use.
So, uh, in regards to the, um, the general plan amendment, is these 7.1 acres or 7.4 acres going to be enough sufficient? How long will that carry us till? Or is there a timer, is there still more needed for this density, flow density?
What this does is that there was a element, there was a, it was an item that you were supposed to care of in your housing element to rezone at least eight and a half acres to R4 zone district. So this is going to get you in compliance with that. And then, um, as well, the state is coming out, will be coming out with new, what they call Rena numbers, your regional housing allocation. And so at that point in time, we'll have to identify, you know, where you stand with those numbers there and what processes would need to take place to update your housing element.
Okay.
But we don't know at this point.
All right, good.
Definitely helps.
Yeah, best, just brings it up to today's standards only, that's it.
Yeah.
A little beyond that actually, so.
Okay. Awesome, good to know.
Okay, so if it brings us to compliance, I'd like to make a motion to move forward.
Second.
And we'll have a motion in a second, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to public hearing, item number three is, uh, consideration of a resolution amending the schedule fees and charges for city service, also known as our user fees. Mr. Moreno?
Thank you, mayor, council members. The item you have in front of you is an annual topic that I bring to you, it's updating our user fees. Uh, what we do annually is go through our development fees and our standard user fees and make sure that they come up to par where we need for our labor groups that actually haven't gone, going through negotiations, whatever, uh, increase that actually could be factored into as well. So at this point, we've taken to its consideration, update them. Uh, just a reminder that you did execute an agreement for us to do a full update of those user fees. Um, so this will get us to a point where a little more current, but we will bring it back to a later date at, once it was, um, those user fees, then that study is can completed. So we can have a further in-depth of what that study looks like and how those financial numbers come out. So for this point, it's really just an update that we can move forward until we get the full user fee study. I will say that we're about 50% completed at this, at this point, so we're moving pretty fast. Um, so I'll continue to update you as we go through that process. Uh, is there any questions from council?
Yeah, I would say, uh, a lot of these, we, we see this every year and it's just, a lot of these are just not applicable, they're not relevant. Like the swimming pool rental fee, the animal redemption fee is completely wrong. The voluntary animal released to shelter is completely wrong. So you're saying that with the, the user fee update that the council approved earlier, these will be cleaned up?
That's correct.
And the fees that we see at a later time will all be relevant and they'll have the correct numbers, is that correct?
That's correct, so, so you'll see some actual new fees come about and you'll see some deletions of a couple of fees as well. Um, so yes, it will be completely cleaned up.
Do we know when those user fees will be updated?
Um, it's about a couple month process, we're actually, like I said, about 50%, so maybe another two months should be close to completion. Um, then we'll sit down and really have a, a kind of, uh, a media vision session from all departments and kind of look at those fees and what they look like.
Council to review after those.
That's correct, yeah, council will have to formally adopt them. Uh, but we'll go through those because especially when it comes to the development fees, I want to hear council understands what those fees look like, how they impact our financial statements, um, whether they're going up and down. So they're really a conversation we, we have openly at that point.
Hey, Isaac, I have a question.
Yeah.
In re- in regards to, uh, when you're doing the, the test, I'm just, I'm just curious as to, uh, as you're doing the, uh, the update on the user fees, are you going to go with the populated, uh, communities that are based like ours or are you going to go with surrounding areas? Or are you?
So what did, what you formally do is, you don't look at other cities per se, you, you look at your process and your procedures. You sit down and say, what does it take for me to do, let's say, for example, a site plan review? Sit down with the planning department, sit down with all the impacted individuals that actually go through their process and say, overall, what is your average? How is it take five hours, two hours, three hours? And that in turn populates into the worksheets and how long it actually takes to develop them. So it's site plan review as a good example, and some can be more difficult than others, right? You really want to capture that middle ground because some site planners reviews, well, it may only take an hour, but some could take about five, so in essence, your, your overall average is more around three. So then at that point, when you have those fee structures and I can see where you're going to, to try and see how competitive are we to other cities? We could look at that analysis to kind of give you an idea when we're talking about that study.
But we are going to, will we, will we be a little cautious as to the fact that I'm, I'm not throwing nobody under the bus, but the fact that we have been bottlenecked in the last couple of years? And I don't know where we've had our, what, what our planning department has been doing, but at the same time, you know, do we have a true, uh, sense that the policies and procedures have been good in our department in order to be able to use that as analysis when you're basing your, your analysis on this, uh, updating user fees?
So what we do too as well is when we're going through the process and we look at some of those, those fees and say, okay, what are other cities that they work with? Um, so this larger organization has multiple contractors for their cities, they're doing one heavy yields and stuff like that. So they say, okay, what, does that, how do they kind of work their structure? Although their structure is a little bit different, right, you're going to have more debt, you're going to have more people and things of that nature. But you, so you kind of go through that, that question mark too and that talk, yeah. Okay, that's just practice for them to do.
Okay, that's good.
Isaac, I have a question.
Sure.
It's page 40, this, this comes up a lot, it's like, get these complaints. But in regards to your yard sale permits, and I, and I'm looking at the fees and I mean, they're so very, I mean, reasonable, you're paying $11 per permit, you get three permits per year. You get three permits per year. Twenty dollars, the permit is not purchased before the date. And then, but my question is, and I get this all the time. When they pull their permits, why don't we have a charge for them if they don't clean up their mess? Like they leave their yard sales signs on the fence or they leave them there on people's yard for weeks. And I mean, I could tell you there's one right now probably still there, and I've seen that one for weeks. I'm just wondering, you know, because it's just, it just makes our city look trashy. So is there any way we can put a fee if they don't pick up their sign after the second day? Or tell them they won't get another permit? I mean, we have to be able to monitor that.
So what, what we can do is actually look into more of the code enforcement end of it, to kind of go after it, wouldn't be a user fee because think of this, since you, you want to charge your fee for something they're not supposed to be doing, right? You're not supposed to be putting it on public utility poles.
Right.
Um, you could put signs up in different areas just to kind of make it public, maybe you want to park your car somewhere, put it out. So we walk them through that process. You're not supposed to put them on poles, right? So what we can do is have code enforcement go back out and reassess those individuals at those addresses that are doing those things. Look at it more from a code enforcement aspect of it, not necessarily a user fee aspect of it. So I can look into that and make sure I follow up. Okay?
You know, Isaac, you know, um, good point, good point there, sir. And I noticed, you know, like when I was in Santa Barbara, they, you know, they have what they call, when they do that events, like yard sales or anything in the park, whatever, they, they pay what they call deposit fees. And if, if it's not clean, they don't get it back, you know?
But those are something that we do for like our, our shelters, there is fees we can assess for deposits and stuff like that too as well because of cleanups.
Hey, you get your money back if you, the signs are all taken, taken down and everything's clean.
Correct. Yeah, that is something we do for our shelters.
Okay, if there's any more questions from council, uh, if not, I will open it up to the public for comment. City clerk, is there anyone wishing to comment on this matter?
Caller ending in nine four eight. Your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item? Mr. Mateo Rodriguez, your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item?
Not this item, thank you.
Mayor Franco, that is all the comments that we have and we do not have any emails.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I will close the public hearing portion and return it back to council. And last chance for questions or I look for a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Roll call please.
Council member Robertson?
Yes.
Council member Avalos?
Yes.
Council member Trahill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes. Okay, that closed the public hearing portion. We are going to our regular business. Agenda item number four. Council request to discuss city of Selma uniform shirts and mask. Uh, city manager Galivan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a council request from council member Robertson to consider having a logoed face masks and shirts for staff at city hall and, uh, council members. As is our practice with council requests. If I'd like to go ahead and turn it on over to the council member making the request.
Thank you. So I've seen many city councils go to events and many of them have shirts with the city seal, the city logo on it, and some even their name, like the city of Reedley comes to mind. It really looks like it promotes an identity of the council. It promotes that it's pre decor and it really shows that council members are a team. Um, and I know what, this has been a topic of informal discussion. I just like to bring it into, on the agenda for formal discussion at this time. To get polo shirts, to look into the cost of getting polo shirts for the council members with the city seal on it or whatever design the council just decides on. Um, I would also extend that to the city hall on, because I'm aware that there's, you know, casual Fridays and it'd be nice for city employees to have polo shirts with the, with the city logo and the city seal on it. Um, in terms of financing, I know I'd volunteer my part of the budget for travel and education for this year because, you know, due to COVID, it doesn't look like we'll be doing a whole lot of travel and the educational will mostly be online. So I, I could see the, the financing being very doable from, from that standpoint. Um, and I think the, it'd be good to bring the potential design back to the council and also to have the city hall staff have input on it as well since they'd be wearing it.
You know, I could add to that, Scott. In the past, we did do that. The, the, when I first got in the council, the staff and the council did have, uh, logo shirts and they were given out. So, uh, it changed when the, when the pandemic of the housing industry turned, downturn in, in the country. Yeah, so we had to dispense with those finance costs, but now we're, we're back in line, so. It is, it was a good thing. I'll be honest with you, back in the past, it identified our city, it marketed our city everywhere we went, any, 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 in conventions or whatever, or even meetings or even league of cities, oh man, these guys are all organized, you know what I mean? It showed that we were, we were a top notch group coming in.
And I would include face masks as well because that's a reality of what we have to wear when, when we go out. We have face masks with the, with the city seal on them as well.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
And, um, our city clerk did get some samples, I believe. Did you want to share those?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you. Others just showing some prototypes.
You have the sample.
Oh. Better? Can you hear me now? Oh, the sample, oh.
Yeah.
Here's a sample, guys. Of the logo of city of Selma.
And, and we can certainly make sure to show you samples of others if council wants us to pursue this.
Do we have any costs on that?
No, I don't believe we received any costs. This was just an idea that.
I, I don't know what the costs of these things are.
Um, city clerk, if Rena, city clerk, if you did get a cost, could you just let us know? But my understanding is we're, we're still working on that.
The cost for masks? I did check out to one of our local vendors, um, and who is uniquely yours, excuse me. Let me take off my mask while you talk. Uh, uniquely yours here in Selma, he is one of our, they are one of our local vendors. They provided me with a prototype and that particular prototype is ten dollars. Council member Avalos, if you would not mind, I'm just passing it around the dais so they can, I'll take a look at it.
You want to pass it around? Okay. And then does she do shirts as well, city clerk?
That is correct.
So they'd be, they're local, right? They're, they're in Selma?
Correct. I did not receive cost, uh, for shirts. I think it would just depend on the type of shirt that the council would, um, prefer.
Okay, well, while we look at that, I'll be good, uh, open this up and see if anybody on the public wants to talk about item number four. Could you check, Rena?
Caller ending in nine four eight. Your line is unmuted. Is there anything you wish to speak to council regarding this item? Mr. Rodriguez, your line is unmuted. Is there anything you wish to speak to council on this item?
No, thank you.
There's no, uh, further comments. There is no emails, Mayor Franco.
All right, thank you. So we'll bring it back to council. Uh, you know, I have, I made a shirt and I know John's made mask, um, so I, I, I get what we're saying about putting a logo on stuff. I think the cost is pretty minimal. Uh, so once we get the cost, I think it's, I'd be willing to buy my own. I don't think I need the city to pay for mine. Uh, but, uh, does the council want some more detail on cost structuring and stuff like that? Before we give a consensus to staff?
I think that would be part of the presentation, right? We would get different polos, different designs and the cost per shirt. I think it would just be part of the presentation from staff.
Yeah. Okay. So I think you have a, is there a consensus? Jim, you for, for sharing more information on it?
A little more information on the shirts?
Yeah, I'll move forward.
All right. Uh, Sarah, you're okay with moving forward?
Yep.
Okay. John?
No, I'm, I'm against spending any money, but you guys can do it, that's fine.
All right, well, we're not talking about spending money, they're just talking about getting more information and what would the cost would be at this point.
Yeah, it's just.
So, uh, uh, city manager, I think you have a consensus to get more, more detail for the staff to make a decision. If we get, I'm sure top of councilman Robertson, what kind of shirts and stuff, uh, examples? Or, or talk to, get a, you can call all of us and get our, get our opinion or talk with your team too. But, uh, just bring something back after you get something and we can discuss it, take up the discussion.
Thank you, we have direction. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, I will consider that matter done for now and we will move on to item number five, which is a presentation and discussion on proposed website with revised LLC and Tracy Pasta will be heading this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I want to introduce you tonight to our, the project manager with, with revised LLC and it's, uh, Thomas Jean. And he's going to walk us through the website design. As you know, we've selected them to help us with the redesign and relaunch of the city of Selma website. They have initially selected a designer Jade who has, uh, worked with city staff in honing in some of the, the key concepts and ideas that we really like for the best communication with the public and with staff, uh, through the city of Selma website. Um, so it looks like Thomas has a screen share, so Thomas, uh, go for it.
Thank you, uh, mayor and council for, uh, for having us and, uh, taking the time to, to look at this today. Uh, so what you're looking at, uh, currently, you should be seeing the current city of Selma, uh, website. And what you should be seeing now is what we're proposing for the new website. So I'm just going to slowly scroll down and take you through what we have here now. Um, this is simply a mockup of what the site would look like, so we're in the early stages still. And so, um, obviously at the, at the very top would be the, the main navigation to find, uh, pretty much every page within the city website. The logo is there. Um, just below that, we have a big, what we call a hero image, which is, um, and it will be an editable image that actually also rotates, kind of like a slideshow. Uh, then on top of that image, we have, uh, these quick links which also could rotate, um, and tend to link to kind of the most popular pages on the site or something that you might want to promote or, uh, get feedback on, something like that. Uh, just below that, we have news and events. Uh, sometimes we separate news and events. In this case, we kind of combined them. Uh, each event could have an image. You can also have a date, uh, and a little blurb about each event or news item. And then, of course, if you were to click read more, it would take you to a page with kind of a full, uh, either news article or more information about that particular news item or event. Uh, and then just below that, we've got kind of more of a, um, promotion of the city, kind of live, explore, work and play. As you hover over each of these circles, in this case, new information would come up on that particular topic. Um, anywhere that you see text on this screen currently and in the future, you'll be able to actually change it. So you're not really stuck necessarily in, in what things say. Um, and just kind of rounding out the homepage here, we, we kind of came up with this tour of Selma concept that would highlight the best of what, you know, the city has to offer. And then just here at the very bottom, we've got a sign up, uh, email sign up for the rave mobile safety and then just a standard footer that kind of has all the contact info, hours of operation, that sort of thing, so. Early stages here and, and, and we're just looking for, um, feedback, not necessarily tonight, but, uh, in the future so that we can tweak this and then move on to the next phases of the, of the project, so. Any, any questions or things I can clarify for you here?
Do you only have the, the demo, the first page? Those other links aren't active yet?
Nope, so, um, so we do have an example of a kind of a, a few interior pages. So, um, this is kind of one of the landing pages that you might see when you come in. Um, more content heavy rather than the homepage, that was more image and icons, but in this case, we still have the icons. People like, um, people don't like to read as much as they're used to, they like to click, they like to see things and interact with the site, so. This is one example of an interior page. On the left-hand side, we also will have upcoming events, latest news and then same standard footer. Then here's another one, we call this kind of a robust department page. And these are for departments that might need like a bigger footprint than, um, than maybe a page that's just kind of standard static content. So economic development, um, police, fire, those types of departments tend to have kind of a little bit of a bigger need. So for those, we expand the footprint just a little bit here. Um, in this case, you'll have a contact person and, um, rotating photos here, so a little bit wider.
Any questions from council?
I'll just say it looks really nice, really good.
I like.
Thank you.
I like the, uh, the Latin that you put in there, but speaking of other languages, will this be by or trilingual? Would it also be in Spanish and also in Punjabi? We have those capabilities and also will it be ADA compliant with, um, with subtitles?
Yeah, so to answer your questions directly, both yes. Um, and in this case, what we're proposing, this little globe up here, when you click on it, will actually have a dropdown of different languages you can select. Um, one site you may take a look at to kind of see how that might work is Arcadia, California. And I'll just show you briefly here, but you click it and it brings down a full list of languages to choose from.
Nice. Will there be a way to interact with the folks in the city, with the city manager, with the council, with the department heads as well? On a real time basis? Like a chat, a chat function or will it just be an email function?
So there absolutely can be a chat function, but sometimes that's a, um, catch 22. Um, we, we have some of our cities that we work with that absolutely don't want to do it and then some that do. So it's really up to you, but that option is, is there and available to you.
The issue being some of them can get into swear words and it's part of the record and it can clog the site, is that correct?
Exactly, data retention, um, sometimes you, we'll have cities that devote a whole, like an entire staff member to it at a certain time of the day. So someone to monitor it, so those considerations, yes.
I like how it looks so far.
Yeah, I do too.
This is a regular business time, so I'm going to open this presentation up for any public comments.
Mr. Rodriguez, your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council?
Uh, just that, that looks like a really good concept and I'm glad that it's going to be, uh, uh, translated into, you know, three different languages. It's awesome.
Thank you. Caller ending in one four five. Your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council regarding this item? Caller ending in nine four eight. Your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council on this agenda item? There being no further comments, Mayor Franco. There are no emails either. Thank you.
Hey, with that, thank you, Rena. With that, I will close the public comment portion and return it back to council. Um, the one question I do have is, when do you think, what's the timeline on this being completed?
Sure, so I'll take that. So, um, generally, it's, it's about four to. Sure. So I'll take that. So, um, generally it's, it's about four to six months. Now, there are some things, uh, the city can do to improve that, uh, or, you know, shorten that timeline. But we do have, um, a certain amount of staff involvement on your side. For example, if we don't get this design approved, um, you know, if it takes you 60 days to approve it, that's one thing. If it takes you a, a week to approve it, that's another. So generally four to six months, but, uh, with your cooperation, of course.
Okay. So I see this as just as a protect, a discussion. Uh, Tracy, are you looking for any type of guidance or approval, or you just want to hear if, if you like what we see so far?
Yeah, definitely want to hear your opinions on the, the layout. I mean, that was initially, um, provided and I got a lot of comments back about, um, wanting more of a modern or a hybrid, um, type of view for just the overall layout. Um, everyone seemed to really like this large hero image. Um, they, they found an image that kind of represents the, um, the heart of our city being the Raisin Capital. Um, you know, we're not tied to the slogan. This image here, um, is meant to, to kind of rotate through and we can have different verbiage on there. So if you're thinking of what you would like to see as kind of those highlight images or what those, uh, key links are going to be, uh, please let me know. I, I want all the comments back, um, and I will synthesize everything I receive and, uh, provide that back to Thomas and Jade for a, uh, kind of final round, um, before we can move into the content migration phase. Uh, currently it's just about the design, the look, um, how, how the, um, news and events and everything are kind of uh, organized on the main page and what our interior pages really look like. Uh, if you feel comfortable with this and you don't have any comments, it's great, but, um, typically there's something either with color or, or maybe something's not as clear or, uh, orientation of a certain icon, anything like that. I definitely want to hear back from you. Uh, I personally do really love this news and event section. I think as we learn to promote Selma as, as a destination for the region, uh, maybe not the big tourism scale, but definitely local tourism with our art center. Um, this is a great place for people to quickly come and access, uh, you know, the current events and, um, really see what, what Selma has to offer and, you know, just that local, um, tourism element. Uh, it also has our icons for social media off to the right in this section. Uh, I think that's really important. We've started working a lot on engaging our residents and citizens through social media, uh, being able to access this broadcast of our, uh, uh, city council is also accessible through that, that YouTube link there. So, um, whatever makes it easier for the public to engage with us, if you see anything that could be improved, um, just want to hear your, your general thoughts. Um, initial reactions are always good. If you think, oh, that icon looks weird, please, please tell me.
Okay. Well, I mean, as far as the look, I, as of right now, I, I'd like the way it looks. I like the way it, it feels. I'm curious to see as you move further along, how we integrate, like, can I do a yard tip permit online? Can I get a form online? Can I put a service request for a pothole repair online? Can I submit a, a, uh, you know, a, a project even to the building department? Can I get those forms online? I'm, I'm hoping to see integration like that as we move forward.
Certainly. Yeah, we're definitely keeping in mind our customer service as we move through this, um, process. Uh, I have already been working with our IT, uh, team on streamlining the different pages for each department. The old website has a lot of depth to it and we're trying to clean that up, make it more accessible, remove old items and get that ready to go for when we do the data migration. So, um, generally that's after this design phase, but we've already started jumping on top of that because we know it'll be a big task for us. Uh, and involving each of the department heads with their needs and their, um, you know, changes in their departments, making sure all the contact information's correct and that, uh, it, it's accessible. So, um, please send me any comments. We'll, we'll get this out to you in an email, um, and have, have links to, uh, provide comments on this.
Well, see, I have a comment. I just want to say it's better than what we have. It's much nicer. It looks much more professional and you're doing a great job. I love that news event. I think, um, keeping the citizens abreast with lots more information, things that are happening is the key. So keep up the great work. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor Franco.
Do we have a, um, a cost on the website? We, we have a cost on the website?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, but I believe that was about 35,000.
Yes, um, I'm sorry that the number, the total amount escapes me, but we'll follow up and, and, um, bring that item back to, to confirm the amount.
Okay. So how are we gonna have this, um, feedback work? Cause after this page is done, we won't see it anymore. Is this gonna be put on the city website to get input from us, from folks who work the city and the public to comment on this, on this archetype here? Or how are we going to be able to think about this, get this out to people we represent, get input? And come back to revise with our suggestions or to Tracy with our suggestion?
So I, I heard that Tracy, you're gonna send a link to the council members. Um, if, if you, and then you would like feedback by a certain time, so you can share it with community members if you'd like. Um, I think generally we were going with this feedback, this opportunity to share it with, with council and the community and, um, that would be the, the extent of our feedback as far as design. Um, if you see something that needs, you know, that you're, you're, you're hearing that.
Is any of this copyrighted? Can we send this out when we get it?
I'm sorry?
Can it, is any of this trademarked or copyrighted? Can we, can we send this out to people, our constituents for their review?
Yeah, Thomas, um, the link that you sent to, to me and to our city staff that has the design portal that shows the, the three or four different pages, um, it, would that be all right to host on our website to gather more feedback or, um, is that just desired to be internal for the time being?
Uh, no, yeah. So you can share it publicly if you'd like. Um, if the, if we are using a logo from some other entity, like perhaps brave mobile safety.
Yeah.
When, you know, that's up to them. So, but other than that, you, you're more than welcome to share it. You own it. You own the whole design and all of it. So.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, yeah. So, um, if it's desired, we can host it on the developed Selma, um, host the links on developed Selma and I can send that out to you. Then, uh, I can include a form there that people can submit comments. Um, probably would only want to have that open for a few days, maybe about a week, um, so that we can get the final comments over to them and they can continue the design process. Uh, so that we can move forward and, and not miss, um, kind of those crucial deadlines to get this launched.
And what would that next deadline be?
Right now we're in the design phase and I think we're about, uh, three weeks into that. So to stay on our timeline, it would be another three weeks, um, for the design phase and then we would move into the data migration. Help me out here, Thomas, what the next phases would be, but, uh, about three more weeks on the design phase and that includes their time to update and work on it and submit back to us for final approval.
Is that all the questions?
You know, uh, Franco, you know, guys, you know, it's, it's a good idea that I like the layout, but I also seem, I like maybe put like, um, put some of the picture of our first responders in these websites, you know, you know, the, you know, the fire, police.
I think they're gonna do that.
You know, that, let them know that, hey, these are our first responders in our community. They're keeping our community safe, you know? That's another marketing tool in our community.
Yeah. I agree.
That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Well, we'll look for the next progress on that. Uh, unless there's any last questions. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to regular business. Item, agenda item number six. Consideration of a resolution approving a request for free waivers for various community events sponsored by the Selma Chamber of Commerce. Chris, yes.
Mayor Franco, I mean, it was the city council, uh, a few years ago, we would bring these as individual items for approval to waive fees. And then last year, we uh, provide them as a, as a one unit. So we don't have to come three times. Um, so we are requesting fees for the chamber of commerce through the chamber of commerce to raise fees for the raisin festival, car show and the Christmas parade. Uh, the car show would be scheduled September of this year of 2020, the Christmas parade of December of 2020. And the raisin festival would be in May of 2021. Uh, before I go any further, there is an asterisk, obviously with any of these three events, it's based on COVID. Presently, none of these events could occur because of the regulations in, in place. But we feel like we should move forward with the request, just in case anything changes and it's, the process has, has been completed. The car show fees would be park rentals, barricades, uh, sound permit, uh, with total $485, uh, the Christmas parade, uh, very similar in fees. The difference is, uh, 460. And the raisin festival is basically the same fees. Um, the biggest difference with the raisin festival obviously is uh, mainly the police department because of overtime to monitor for safety of the event. So, uh, that is $11,506 for the toll. Uh, coming up request of $12,451, uh, just slightly higher than last year's request for all three events. Uh, the chamber director, Bob Allen had called me today. He has an appointment tonight. So I can answer any questions, um, having known been around all three of these events, but that is a request tonight. Again, I will emphasize these are based on asterisk. Um, they will only occur if it's county and state, uh, COVID regulations change.
Any questions from council?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, Mike, you're stating that the car show is for this year, for September the 20th?
September 2020. Yeah, I think the date was, uh, the September 12th was the date planned.
Okay.
Highly unlikely, but we are going through the process, distinct.
Christmas parade, you're saying that's this year as well, right? 20?
Yeah, December 5th.
And that's?
2020.
Okay. And then the raisin festival, that's for next year?
Yeah, that would be May, the first Saturday in May of 2021.
Okay.
We do the request based on our fiscal year.
Yeah, I, I think we've just never done it this way. I mean, they, you bring all these events at one time. We, we're used to doing this when the, the, the events are coming up. Um, and especially these are gonna be all for next year. So I don't see that it's pressing to make this an item or to move forward with it now, when we can just table this for next year.
Now, now, we did this the same last year. The car show is for this in basically a month in September. The Christmas parade would be December of this year. You're about three months.
Which are more likely, these two events are not even gonna happen this year.
Correct. But if.
That's my point.
Well, the purpose was like I mentioned though, if, if something were to change, this has already been done. And so it wouldn't delay the event from promoting and marketing. Um, if we wait, 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 and all of a sudden a month ahead of time, the regulations change and then we're scrambling to get these fees waived, not knowing we can have the event. So working with these, the chamber, we were just trying to get these, uh, approved for a waiver in case COVID does change or regulations change.
Hey, are you done, Sarah?
I'm done.
Oh, okay. Hey, Mike, you know, you know, you know, I have a, I have a, I have an issue with this, you know, uh, under this, this, you know, this COVID-19 thing going on. Um, my, my personal opinion, I, I, you know, I'd rather see it kind of tabled on this issues. Um, because of the situation we're having right now in this pandemic situation. Uh, and we can come back to it. It's not a question. We can't come back to it. It's just at this time, I, I feel that this is not, um, I don't feel right about this, you know what I mean? Cause, um, I, you know, the reason why I say that, cause I have a boy down south in, in the medical team. He's, he's treating patients with the, these diseases, unfortunately. Uh, we haven't seen him for a long time, but, uh, I just don't want to, I don't want to say, hey, let's do it. And all of a sudden someone has an event and, uh, we're still not quite, we barely got out of the, I want to say out of the safe zone and all of a sudden in, in back in again, you know what I mean? Uh, in a pandemic situation again, I don't want to, I don't want to see that. I want to open up smartly. I want to do it smartly. And I feel like table into this issue.
So I would, I would agree. This is premature at this time. I think if these events are gonna be staged comeback. And it wouldn't take much to come back. But right now there's very little probability that they're even gonna happen.
Yeah, I, I just don't feel comfortable on this issue. That's my thoughts. Guys, that's my thoughts.
Are you making a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table it. We'll bring it back, um, January.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay, um, well, this is a public comment. So, uh, I mean, a regular business side, you need to open this to the public. Uh, I don't know, Neil, do, if it's tabled, do we have to open it to the public?
LM speak on it.
Individual callers. You, you want, you want to solicit the, uh, the comment from each individual caller? Because they do have a right, uh, to address any item on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to verify. All right. Uh, we have a, a motion to second the table, but before calling for roll call, we're gonna open up the, uh, to public comment. City clerk, do you have anybody from the public wishing to comment on this matter?
Caller ending in one, four, five. Your line is unmuted. Would, do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item? Caller ending in nine, four, eight. Your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council? Oh, I see. Caller ending in one, four, five.
Hello? Hello?
Yes. Yes, this is Dan Reese calling. So if, if you cancel these and table it, which is what your intentions are, what are the businesses gonna be doing during this time? Because they're barely surviving if the restaurant business, food businesses or whatever. And i- i- if the ruling went forward anyway with, with the health department, they'd wind up closing it down anyway. So you, you're just putting more hurt to the businesses, what I see. That's it.
And thank you for your comment.
Caller ending in nine, four, eight. Your line is unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Caller, may I have your name, please?
Teresa Salas. Um, my, from my understanding, what I'm hearing is that this has been done in the past. All you're doing is approving the waiver of the fees if the events are held. By tabling them, you're making, you're not, well, by approving it, you're not saying that they're going to have the events. They're just saying that you're going to waive the fees if everything changes and the events are held. So I don't see what the harm is in approving it. You're not going, you're not telling them, go ahead and have your event. Because if the state or the county or the city says that you can't do it, they're obviously not going to do it. But you're also including an event here that's taking place in May of next year, which God willing, we will be able to have. So I, I just don't see what the point of postponing is. Um, if something should happen last minute, then like Mr. Krishna said, you're gonna have people scrambling, trying to get things approved. And if there's no council meeting, how are they going to get these things approved? So I think if there's no harm in saying that the fees are waived, because if the event is canceled, the event is canceled. But if it's not, those things will be ready to go if circumstances allow the event to be held.
Right. Thank you for your comments. Right, thank you for your comments. Is that all the members of the public?
Mr. Rodriguez, your line is unmuted, do you have any comments for council at this time?
Yes, uh, am I being heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, um, the only thing that I would say is that, um, currently, that it's not, it's not crazy to plan for events. Although I really highly doubt anything in September's gonna happen, and I would definitely advise against it. Um, I don't think it's crazy to, to, uh, approve something like this, just in case something does happen where it is gonna, uh, those events will happen, uh, just to be prepared, and I think Mr. Krishner is, has a good intention to, you know, get the fees waived, just in case these events do happen. Plus one is definitely very far out. I don't think it's crazy to think that in December, we could possibly have the, have the, uh, Christmas Parade, or next May, possibly have, you know, other things happen.
Thank you for your comments.
There are no further callers, and we have no emails, Mayor Franco.
All right, well, thank you, I will, uh, close, uh, public comment and return it back to council. And there's any, before I ask for roll call on the motion to table, is there any last comments? Okay, all right, we have a, uh, a motion to table this request until a later date, I believe, January, Mayor Protem said, uh, roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
No.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
No. All right, with that, we will move on to agenda item, regular business number seven, consideration of appointments of various city commissions. All right, City Clerk, Raina, I think this is your or City Manager, who's leading this?
Yep, that is me. Mayor and, and members of the City Council, as you are aware, there are six city commissions to which the council has the discretion to appoint some or all of the members, members. Each commission has an issue, policy, and our program focused, the council relies on these groups to advise them on a wide range of issues affecting the city, and to assure that they are responsive to community needs. I am going to, uh, share my screen with council and with the public, so that everyone can see, I do not believe I labeled the exhibits correctly or at all, my apologies. Bear with me one second. As I pull up that screen.
Page fifty-three?
I am looking at, that is correct, I'm looking at page fifty-three, and page fifty-three, it would be Attachment A. And as described in the staff report, Attachment A is a list of the commissioners' positions with terms that are set to expire, uh, along with the vacancies, this list also contains a point of terms for commissions with the names of the appointee and terms of office, as well as any applications that I have on file. As you will see in the, uh, right-hand side, any applications that I have on file are listed here. Those, uh, incumbents requesting, uh, requiring ratification are in yellow, and those in green just show the vacancies. Now you will see that, um, I did place on here for Personnel Commission, there are no commissioners whose terms are expiring, but as a, a way of just showing council and being completely transparent, we did have three applications still on file, so I did want to just let council know that once I receive an application, I, we keep it on file. I do give a quick phone call to those applicants whenever, um, there is an agenda item, and ask them if their application, if they request that their application remain on file. They just do a quick check-in with them and ask them if this is something that they still wish the council to consider. At this time, you will see that, uh, the Planning Commission has two commissioners with terms that are currently expiring, with a list of five applications on file. Um, I do want to advise council that in previous years, they, there has been an ad hoc committee, uh, comprised of two council members, that has interviewed applicants and incumbents in the past. And if that is something that you guys would like to consider, you would just, um, advise me, and I would set up all the appointments and have, uh, council advise me of the two ad hoc committee members. Just as a point of reference, in case, uh, they would like to go in a different direction.
It seems that we need more, more recruits in the community.
Definitely, the Planning Commission, as you may see, the Planning Commission has five applications on file. But for Pioneer Village Commission, we only have one application on file with four vacancies.
Right.
And with the Measure S Oversight Committee, we have, uh, two of our committee members that are, terms are expiring with no applications on file, likewise with Recreation and Community Services. Uh, that is my report.
Are those, are those members asking to be ratified?
Those in yellow have all asked to be ratified. And, uh, the applications, apologies, um, also included in the staff report in the packet is the attendance records, so you will see here, Recreation Commission and Pioneer Village, we had the absentee or, um, records from the, uh, from Michael Krishner received, and for Planning Commission, I had the attendance recap for twenty nineteen and the period of twenty twenty.
If you think we did the ad hoc route, cause I, since I've been on council, we've done it several ways, we did it in a closed session, we did it on the bias. If you think we did it ad hoc way, would that give opportunities to go and recruit more people to our commissions, uh, I mean, the, uh, the Planning Commission seems to be no problem, but we seem to have on all our other commissions a lack of community interest for some reason. How long do you think that process would take, the ad hoc process, do you think something we could do in less than a month?
Depending on the availability of our ad hoc committee members from council.
All right, uh, council, what are you guys' thoughts on this matter?
We have lots of applicants for the, uh, Planning Commission, as the mayor says. And for the Personnel Commission, even though no one comes up this year, it's like there are several waiting in the wings, I do agree that there are some commissions that have an excess of availability. Um, we just went over the, um, website for the city, which also could be used as an attraction and retention tool for the commission, as opposed to an ad hoc committee in the age of COVID, which might not be the best way to select commissioners at this point, I think my feeling would be to go ahead and vote. We're already a little, a little late, as you see from the expiration dates on some of these. It's probably the best thing to move forward and maybe consider an ad hoc committee in better times when we don't have COVID, and we have, we don't have some of the limitations that we have now.
Is, uh, what's everybody else's thoughts? Jim, what's your thought?
Well, you know, in the past, we had committees, and it came back, then we have committees with the council as a group. It, it really falls, honestly, guys, it really falls under all of us, you know, as a group. We have to make a decision on, on these personnel commissions regardless. Uh, and I think, you know, my personal opinion is, you know, you know, I've seen both sides. I think my feeling is, as a group, or council as a group, we make a decision as a group. You know what I mean? Uh, you know, when you go out and do the IHOP group with two council people, sometimes you don't get the true picture of another individual. And, and by this way, when we look at the packets of every individual, we get to analyze, we get to do a comparison. And as a council, we get to talk about the issues as far as the comparison of these people on being on these commissions, you know? I'm depressed, I'm actually impressed with the Planning Commission, we have five applicants now. Uh, before, we only had three in the past, but it's good, I, I, I like what I see, and, and, and life itself is moving forward. The Recreation Department's, it's always been the way it is, uh, Personnel Commission, it's been the way it is too. The Pioneer Village has always been a challenge for everybody, and are, over the years, so it's always been that way. The Measure S and the Measure P are all new items, so anything that's new, people volunteer. And, uh, the Pioneer was one place, always been the challenge one over the years anyhow, so that's the, uh, that's the key on that one right there.
It's like you guys wanna handle it tonight, or should we just handle it tonight?
I said, let's just move forward.
Okay, all right.
All right, move forward.
All right, uh, before we start discussing this, I'm gonna open it up to the public in case any persons listening wishing to remain a commissioner, or want to be a commissioner, have opportunity to speak, so at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Mr. Rodriguez, your line is unmuted. Would you like to speak to council regarding this agenda item?
Of course, um, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, well, one, I'm, I'm reapplying to the Recreation Community Services Commission. I served one, two-year term so far, and then I also saw the, uh, saw the need for commissioners in the Pioneer Village, so I, and I've seen, and I've seen and dealt with the place a lot uh, in the past couple of years, and I see the potential to utilize the, you know, the real estate that we have, so that, that's the reason I wanna, you know, be on the, or be on the Pioneer Village Commission, uh, utilize it to the best we can and make some, you know, a staple in California. Uh, I'm also just letting everybody know that I'm available for, for questions as you go down the list, and I'll be on the line.
Caller ending in one, four, five, your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item?
No comments.
Thank you. Caller ending in nine, four, eight, your line is unmuted, do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item?
Um, my name is Teresa Salas, and I am one of the applicants for the Planning Commission. I am still interested in doing something more active in my community, and I would just like to be considered, thank you.
Mayor Franco, we have no further, no other callers.
All right, well, thank you for, thank you very much, and thank you, uh, for those who made comments, but that I'll return it to council, and, uh, let's just start at the top and work our way down, guys. Okay, uh, let's start with the Planning Commission, uh, that's one we're active, we have to really make our decisions on. Commissioner number three, Glenn Nice Wonder, is up for reratification or re extension. Uh, I guess first we wanna talk about that position. How do you guys feel about just, uh, reinstating Commissioner Nice Wonder?
Can I make a motion to reinstate Mr. Nice Wonder?
Hey? We have a motion? I'll make a second. Okay, is there anyone, anyone wish to comment on this motion before we go to vote to reinstate Mr. Nice Wonder? Okay. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
No.
Councilmember Robertson?
No.
Mayor Protem Gera?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. So now that we have a vacancy at three, uh, we have our applicant number one is Teresa Salas, applicant number two, Josh Shepherd, applicant number three is Jagi Kar, applicant number four is Parveen Sandhu, and applicant number five is Nadia Juadis, I believe I said.
Excuse me if I- I make a motion to put Teresa Salas on the board.
Okay. Is there a second? With that, I will, I will make a second on that comment, I mean, I'll make a second to do that. I will second your motion, let me clarify that. Any discussion before we vote on this, guys? No? All right, well, my thought is, uh, I believe Mr. Shepherd and Teresa Salas have the two longest standing applications. So if we are not going to renew the existing ones, my thought process is, they've shown the willingness to be part of this commission. Uh, they have just as much qualifications as the other candidates, so I think it would be wise to to put them in, just because they have been waiting in line basically the longest, and they're qualified to do it, and I, I think they would be great fits, uh, as well, I think Mr. Nice Wonder would continue to do a good job, sure, we have re-voted him in. Okay, with that, roll call, please?
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
No.
Councilmember Robertson?
No.
Mayor Protem Gera?
No.
Okay. Looks like we still have an open seat for vacancy number three. Is there any recommendations for any of the other candidates?
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation, after looking at the report, I like to, uh, Pardeet Sandhu, I I make a motion to, uh, to put her on there.
I'll second.
Okay, we have, uh, first and a second, is there any comment, anyone who wish to make before I call roll, uh, for roll? All right, roll call, please?
Councilmember Avalos?
Hi.
Councilmember, um, forgive me, Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
No.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
No. Okay. I think we have a new commis-, uh, planning commissioner. With that, we'll move on to our next commissioner, is Commissioner Joel Fedor. And I believe if I might have taken, he stepped in in mid, in midterm, and, and took over, uh, for a, someone who had stepped down. So is there a motion to reinstate Mr. Fedor as a planning commissioner for another term?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, uh, I'd also like to do a follow-up. Uh, being myself a small business, uh, owner, and then looking at all our commissioners, and, uh, Joel Fedor's been a longtime member of our community, he's a small business owner. So I'd like to make a motion to put him back, reinstate him in the Planning Commission.
As a motion, is there a second? Okay, I, that, I agree with you, uh, Councilman Trahill, I think, uh, he's done a, a, a great job. Uh, also, he's not even have done a, a full term, and I think he deserves, uh, to be on there longer. So I will second that motion for Joel Fedor to be reinstated as a planning commissioner. Okay, if there is no last comments or discussion on this motion, then I will call for roll. Okay, if there is no last comments or discussion on this motion, then I will call for roll, roll call, please.
Mayor Franco, I do see another caller on the line wishing to speak.
Okay, I'm gonna. Alright, we're gonna uh temporarily hold that roll call vote and open it back to the public for for the one caller who called in late.
I do apologize, I keep seeing this caller come in and out. A caller ending in one seven eight, your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for the council at this time?
Yeah, I do, this is Joel Fedor, and I just wanted to say that I'm currently a commissioner, and I've been uh really appreciating my time there, I was appointed uh midterm when a seat was vacated, would really enjoy the uh chance to uh serve a full term, and uh I do make it a priority, I haven't missed a meeting yet, and uh just would appreciate your consideration, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fedor. And with that, we will close public comment and return it back to council. And City Clerk, I will continue with the roll call on the motion that was made by Councilman Treheal.
Thank you, Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
No.
Councilmember Robertson?
No.
Mayor Protem Gera?
No.
Alright, it looks like we have a vacancy uh for Commissioner number four. Uh and we have four applicants to choose from, we have a Teresa Salas, Josh Shepherd, Jagi Carr, and Nidia Juarez, Nadia Juarez.
I'd like to make a motion for Josh Shepherd.
We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, I will make a second for Josh Shepherd, he's been a long time out here wanting to be on this commission. So I will second that motion. Any comment before I call for roll, guys? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
No.
Councilmember Robertson?
No.
Mayor Protem Gera?
No.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd did not uh get enough votes to be a commissioner, so we are still looking for a nominee to fill vacancy seat number four.
I make a, I want to make a motion for Lydia Juarez.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any comments?
I would make a comment, excuse me, I a comment to my second is, just like I voted for Parveen, Nidia has experience with the Housing Authority, which I think it would serve her well on the planning commission, just as Parveen had experience in the public sector with the Tulare County Solid Waste Department.
She had an impressive resume.
Resumes, all of them had impressive resumes.
They're all good.
Very impressed with everyone, it's just, these two had uh applications that I think would serve them a good stead for experience on the planning commission.
Any further comments from other council members? No, with that, um roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
No.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
No. City Clerk, could you clarify Councilman Robertson's vote?
I do believe Councilmember Robertson seconded the motion, he voted yes, is that correct, Councilmember Robertson?
That is correct, I voted yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure, it sounded like no, so I just wanted to clarify, alright. Alright, so I think we have the guys, we have the planning commission all taken care of. Uh next, we're gonna move on to the rec of the rec and uh community commission. Uh kinda easy, we have two people looking to be reratified and one vacancy. So do we have any motions to ratify the existing members?
I'll make a motion to ratify both at the same time, can we?
I thought you can do that.
You can, you can make a motion to ratify both of.
There's no, there's no, there's no people.
There's nobody wanting to, there's nobody applying for the jobs.
Sure, yeah. What's the motion?
What's the motion again?
To reappoint those those two that are in yellow.
Yeah.
For the Recreation Community Service. Okay, I would second that.
Okay.
Alright, uh if necessary, any comments, uh then we will uh roll call, please.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes. Okay, uh we are not doing the Personnel Commission, because no one is up, uh Pioneer Village Commission, we have four vacancies and one applicant.
Okay, I'll make a motion to um accept uh an applicant reinstated, Bob Allen, and the other applicant is Matthew Rodriguez.
I'll second that.
Okay. I believe there's no uh need for comment on this, so we will roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
I vote yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes. Measure S Oversight Committee, we have two members looking to be reinstated, no applicants.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them at the same time.
Second it.
Okay. Seeing no comments from council, I will ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Yes. Okay, and uh just for clarification purposes, Measure P is that um is that Wednesday Police Station is corrected, is that commission going away, or is it staying, staying intact for the year, uh the life of the bond?
People stay for the life of the bond, Mr.
Okay, alright. That's just a one thought that came to, so we gotta find, guys, if you know any community members wanting to join some commissions, just uh encourage them to apply.
Uh Mr. Mayor, just as a cop, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just as a comment. Um if we don't get people to come forward for some of these commissions, maybe we ought to look at reducing the commissions to five instead of seven. Just a thought for the future.
Yeah, that's something we can always look at. Alright, um.
One more comment, uh question, for these vacancies, can people still apply for these?
Well, absolutely, we're we're always open for applicants for vacant positions.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Rina retains those until they tell her she's don't, they're no longer interested.
That is correct, thank you, um I do retain these until those applicants on file advise me that they are no longer interested. Or if council decides to say that the applicants that have submitted, like those three that have submitted, if at the, if there was a motion at that time to let me know that they are not being accepted and no longer want to accept them. So if they wanted to um have those applications remain on file, they would need to resubmit. During uh today's motions, council did not advise that, so I would just retain those three on, or actually those three for the planning commission on file, and for the next time, if there is an opening.
Thank you, thank you, that we want to hold on to everybody who wants to get involved. Okay, with that, uh hang on, guys, we're almost done, with that, we're uh agenda item number eight, regular business. Consideration of a resolution approving a request to enter into a license agreement with Somma Business Park LLC and approve the city manager to execute agreement. Mr. Kersner?
Yeah, Mayor Franco, mayor of the city council, um Nicola Anderson, I, Recreation Supervisor, met with Tom Mesimer, the owner of uh Somma Business Park LLC, which is located at seventeen seventy-five Park Street. Uh it's right between Witson and McCall. And we've been looking around for a long time to be able to do events in which we could do like a drive-in movie. Um most of the parking lots have trees or some kind of thing blocking, not fenced in area, and so we met Mr. Mesimer, and he's been very supportive, he's willing to charge no fees for us to use the facility parking, uh these would be three nights, um and we have changed since the staff report had gone out. Um we were going to try to do two movies in one performance, and based on the performance license fees, the companies are not reducing any kind of a license fee, and so you're talking about three to five thousand dollars just to get a license fee, so uh there's no way it could be a fundraiser, so what what is in the plan now, if this is approved tonight for the license agreement, would be uh showing the original Willy Wonka, uh the Disney movie Coco, and then Jurassic Park during three nights, uh vehicles, you'd be paid by a vehicle to come into the facility, uh watch the movie, um your sound will come through your radio, there's a radio station that would be um set up, and that's how you would receive your sound. And we'd park cars there, uh so you'd have to stay in your car to watch the movie, much like to drive in, and the only time you'd actually your car is to go to the restroom, or uh we would have a concession stand there for a fundraiser. The agreements are for these three nights, if this is very successful and COVID continues, we are also requesting an extension to where the city manager could sign additional um rights to do a license fee. This license group was reviewed by both our city attorney and our risk management authority, and we were approved to move forward, uh there was no questions with the agreement. So tonight, we're just asking approval to 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 enter into an agreement for a a minimum of three, and potentially more, and see how successful they are. Uh large vehicles will have to be parked on the side, and large vehicles will be parked in the back, and then we would charge a higher, a little higher fee per car for the front row, and as you move back, a little lower fee.
Mr. Kersner?
Yes.
If you, I'm dating myself, but when I used to go to drive-in, uh in a pickup, we would park it reverse and put chairs in in the back of the bed, would that be allowed?
Uh if you parked in the back or side, as long as it's the same family in the truck, yes.
Right, you just gotta remain in your bed.
Yeah, when I gotta park a truck in the front row, because you're gonna be blocking the the people behind you. Uh we will have a raised screen, so it will be a little higher, so people can see.
And the windows be up or down, or does it matter, can windows be down?
The windows could be down, it's gonna be through your radio, your car, so it's gonna be your own individual radio uh will be playing the sound. We've already been registered for a frequency, so much like when you drive down the highway, you see for uh weather information, turn to sixteen twenty. Um this is gonna work the same way, everybody will just turn that radio station.
Mike, I have a question, I'm more of a visual person, so I drove by there, and I noticed two separate parking lots. Which one is it going, is it going to be the one where the um it used to be upright, but it's, I think, the high-speed rail right now or something?
Yeah, it would be where the west parking lot, there's two gates uh closest to McCall. The the first gate closest to the actual building would be the entrance, and the back gate would be for, we're gonna have two gates that access for both exiting. Uh the back gate would also be cleared open for the fire department, police department, just in case for emergency, but it's the west, furthest west parking lot, the closest to McCall.
Okay, so.
Right across from Bass.
In the back, okay.
What's the cost per car?
Uh you know, we're still looking at that, to be honest, probably over from twenty to thirty, um I know Madeira, we've done some research on Madeira Drive-In, they have a um maximum of six per car. We're trying to make this affordable at the same time as a fundraiser. So we are gonna limit the number of people in our car.
Who's providing the rest?
Who's providing the the security?
Well, we're working to fire and police, but uh we'll have uh all kind of volunteers out there also, we don't anticipate a big challenge here, there'll be no alcohol, it'll just be families in cars.
Just providing the restroom?
Uh we're working with waste management as part of one of our events.
Will those be included in the waste management contract at no charge to the city, or there'll be a rental fee involved?
No, it'd be part of our events, because we're allowed six per year, we we use zero this year, so we have the flexibility to use it for this.
And when are you looking to start this?
Uh September and May plus for October, again, these will be Saturday nights around eight o'clock, um Monday through Friday, according to Somma Business Park, uh they're out there till ten or eleven o'clock, so it has to be a Saturday night, uh based on the usage of that parking lot. For the availability of the parking lot.
What's the cost to uh to get hooked into some of these concerts that some of these bands are doing on screens? Has the city checked into that, because I think people are going to drive-ins and and going seeing, you know, Garth Brooks and Blake Shelton and people like that, who are broadcasting from a single location to all these these drive-ins.
Yeah, those rates are pretty high, I know for those, it's a hundred to ten dollars per car. The Arts Council will look at, they are talking about concerts in the future, um depending on the band doing a live concert. Uh we had talked about because of COVID, doing a satellite concert where the band's playing off-site, so but it's coming through the screen. We're work similar, I I think that's why the last paragraph, we did ask for uh the ability to add more different types of shows later on, just to see how successful these are. Right now, with funds and donations, uh we're actually zeroed out, so this is a win-win for the Arts Council and the chamber, there will be a um it's not gonna be a negative, whether we get five cars or sixty cars, um they're in good shape based on sponsorship, especially with the uh Business Park not charging us for the use of the parking lot.
I have a procedural illegal question for our city attorney. Um it looks like the license agreement only names is only has the Somma Business Park and the city of Somma as the two parties of the contract, since the Chamber of Commerce is also going to be a party, and that they'll be benefiting financially from this. Shouldn't the city, to make this clean, have a license agreement with the Somma Business Park, and then have a sub-license agreement with the chamber, with them as a sub-licency, to protect against the city's liability, okay, something so that the city doesn't have to pay for the chamber's liability in event something happens.
Yeah, there's, there's no provision in the contract that prohibits uh sub-licenses. So that is definitely a possibility. Uh presumably, you would want to require of the chamber the same uh insurance coverage levels that the city is required to have under this contract, the three million general comprehensive liability, and the 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 limits on the workers' comp that they have. Uh just to make it so that the liability for an event coming back to the chamber doesn't wash over to the city, because it's.
So you're saying that there are two different sets of limits, and the chamber has lower limits, the city would be responsible for that gap?
It's, that's great, they had a million-dollar policy, uh the person who's injured gets two million in damages, that one million is gonna come to your insurance.
You know, I don't want to hold this up, but I think I would want to modify any motion that happens with a requirement for the chamber to be a sub-licency.
Yeah, with with respect to those functions that the chamber uh is is conducting under the sub-license agreement, that's uh that's a perfectly acceptable way of doing it. Uh they they can presumably go to their insurance carrier or agent and request an increase if that's necessary uh to their insurance coverages to cover just this event, and my understanding is that your typical insurance company will do that for you.
Okay, and then the city is protected in that case, so it doesn't.
Alright, with that's all the questions, and we will open it up to the public for comments at this time.
Mayor Franco, at this time, we have no callers on the line, nor do we have any emails.
Alright, with that, we will close the public comment, bring it back to council, and so are the, is there something you want to, anybody wants to make a motion with the modification? So is there something you want to, anybody wants to make a motion with the modification you talked about, Scott?
I would make that motion to approve this, to enter into a license agreement with Salma Business Park with the modification that a sub-licency agreement be entered into with between the city and the Chamber of Commerce, Salma Chamber of Commerce, on the same terms and limits that the city enters into with the Salma Business Park.
With with respect to functions conducted by that.
With respect to functions where the Chamber participates.
So I have one question. Does that mean that that some agreement has to come back to council or we authorize the city manager to execute that?
No, the the city manager would be authorized to execute that agreement based on.
Would be identical, so.
Correct, I just want to make sure.
Be the same agreement, just different names.
Okay.
Are the motions are a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, unless there's any further comments, then roll call, please.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Mayor Franco.
Yes. Our guys, we're almost done. Departmentmental reports, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as a follow-up to the letter that was sent to Senator Hurtado regarding the homeless encampments on Caltrans property around Floral and Highway ninety-nine, staff met with the Senator's office, Caltrans and CHP. Because of COVID, Caltrans has to get approval from the governor's office to move any homeless encampments. They are requesting permission to remove the homeless along the off-ramp towards Floral there. We do have another meeting with them and the county to discuss removal of the entire encampment, including the triangle. The new, they do want to learn more and need to explain more to the governor's office about the where homeless may be able to go and the types of services that would be provided to them in the triangle. The new CHP captain for the area also met separately with Chief Gomez and will be meeting with me later this week regarding their responses in our area that are in their jurisdiction. So we have had a, they've been very responsive to the letter that was sent and will continue to to work on this. The city is also making grant applications for active transportation projects. And today we kicked off a week-long campaign for community engagement and feedback on three projects that we're considering. And if we could at this time, I'd like to share the video and survey that Tracy Tosta did that has been sent out to all of you and been put on our Facebook page. I mean, it's a pretty exciting new way for us to engage and get feedback from the community. And we're looking for three projects here that we'd like feedback on. The three projects include a bike lane along Danube. And all of these projects are part of our current active transportation plan. There's some really upbeat music that goes along with this. We explain what the process is and and why we do this. There we go, there's that music.
In the northeast corner of Salma, right here at Orange Avenue in Danube, we've got quite a wide road on one side and a very narrow road on the other. We've got some great sidewalk improvements. And one of the things we can add here is a bike lane or a buffered bike lane or a bike path.
I really like this one.
This is under the Rose Street Bridge. As you can see, there's quite a bit of trash on the ground behind me. No sidewalks. A safe route to school would be ideal for this location. There's a school just around the corner. There's kids out here playing. You might be able to hear them in the background. We would like to clean this up, brighten it up and extend the sidewalks all the way down at the end of the block down the corner. This intersection at Mitchell, Nebraska, has an unimproved corner that connects directly to Ringo Park and up the street to Eric White Elementary. To make this a safe route to school, we'd like to see some new sidewalks, a bike lane and potentially some other improvements.
As we mentioned, all of these are in our active transportation plan. So getting feedback on which one of these the community would like best or in which priority you think they should go will help us. And feedback, community feedback's an important part of our scoring on these grants. So we appreciate the feedback that we receive and it will help us score higher in this competitive grant application process. There's a survey also that, as you go down on the YouTube page that you can click on. And that's that's how you activate the survey. It's a very quick, couple-question survey, but again, easy to use and important feedback for us.
You can access this from the city website?
I don't believe it's on our website yet.
I think it's in the email that Tracy sent to us.
Yes, yes. And we will look at getting that on the website.
And Teresa, this this survey is a week-long, week-long survey?
Yes, it goes through Friday.
Okay, so it's just like, hey, tell your friends, neighbors and everybody you see that. Spend a few minutes doing a survey, give their input.
Yes, please. One other thing, at our last meeting, Cal Water gave a presentation on the CPUC's consideration of eliminating decoupling practices in water conservation. Since then, the CPUC has postponed the decision. Cal Water would like Salma to join on in signature of another letter urging the CPUC to analyze decoupling in a separate proceeding and warning that moving away from the practices would lead to higher rates. The request from Cal Water was received today and is due by Friday. I believe it also was directly emailed to each of you. It is in line with what you heard from Cal Water at the last meeting and what you had approved sending out in that letter. So we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that and that you would be in support, again, of continuing to get that same message to the CPUC.
Are you looking for consensus right now?
Yes, thank you.
To support non-decoupling, if I'm stating it correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Guys, are we still on the same page of supporting non-decoupling? I think Cal Water determined if if Salma was to reverse its decoupling practice, that the majority of our rate payers' rates would go up.
And and at this point, Cal Water would like that to be a separate proceeding, that it be completely analyzed as a separate proceeding.
So this letter is just saying, make it a separate proceeding, correct?
Yes.
I'm not necessarily supporting the elimination of decoupling. I'm not supporting decoupling. I'd like to know more about it, so I would support further study of the matter.
And the letter is for further study?
Yeah.
Teresa, I also have requested a percentage from, I don't remember his name, but he was going to send me the Salma numbers.
Okay.
And I never, he never did send those.
Okay, thank you, we'll follow up.
Well, I I'm agreeing with Councilmember Robertson. I think making this own separate issue would just shed more light and information on the matter. And this letter is not saying we support it or don't support it. We just want a more thorough examination of it before a decision is made. Jim, how do you feel on the matter?
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should, yeah, we should look at more information on it, really, before we move on.
Okay. Councilmember Trujillo, do you support continuing the letter? You're muted.
We can send the, we can send the letter. It's not about it, but because really it's not, it's not, we're not committing to it, we're just asking for information. It's okay to send it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreements with you guys. We could get more information and maybe get back into and then bring it back to us.
All right, I think you have your consensus, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. And one last thing, we did also, due to the extreme heat forecasted this week, there may be rotating electric utility outages and everyone is advised to conserve energy, especially between the hours of three to ten PM through Thursday evening. And we have been helping to put that information out on our Facebook page as well. Thank you.
Is Salma on that list of rolling blackouts for the next three days?
Yes.
But we don't know necessarily when it's going to affect us.
That that's correct.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I actually have, believe it or not, a reportable action from your closed session meeting of March sixteen. On that date, the council approved and authorized the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with the California State Department of Finance. And that agreement resulted in a payment to the Department of Finance in the amount of seven hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. That that matter has now been consummated. So it now just now comes, becomes reportable. I'll note that the governor's stay-at-home order was executed the very next day after your your closed session. That closed down the courts as well and eliminated a lot of the personnel at the Attorney General's office with whom we were dealing. So that's primarily why that only becomes reportable as of now.
Mr. Kersner, does that allow us to get our completion letter?
That's that's still something we're working on.
All right, thank you. Assistant City Manager, Moreno?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Just a couple items. Wanted to update you again. Councilmember Trujillo requested I talk about capital improvement project with SKF. I just want to follow up with that inquiry. I did talk to SKF, Veronica, she will be sending me a notice of completion. Once anything, any type of capital improvement project is done, she will also issue a memo to the board for the projects for Salma after they get approved. So it'll be notified on two different ends, one directly to staff and one also to the board as well. Next item to update is with the high-speed rail contract. I did another site visit, let next, our last week, to get the electrical plans up to par so where we could utilize them. So I'm getting a quote on that. We are continually moving forward. We now have a tentative class scheduled for October fifth for the very first class that'll be working through that process. Again, we will be updating you as we get more further through. I'm looking to execute and fully execute the lease probably this week, the latest next week. That way we can lock down that agreement, we can move forward. I just updated you a little bit further as well. The the EDC is actually looking to apply for another grant to continue this program and trying to maintain it here in Salma for a couple more years as well. So we'll be trying to, I'll update you as we go through that process and maybe look for support. The next item is Danube and Call. As you remember, we did get a grant to actually construct that light at the intersection. Engineering has already reached out to the county to get that right-of-way approval process because some of that intersection is part of, is in any county access. So they're agreeing to that terms and they're going to be taking to the board to get that moving forward so we can move that project through that grant process. That concludes my presentation.
Mr. Moreno? Public Works?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Shane. Fire Chief Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just a quick update on our staff deployments to local fires. We did have the state engine did depart midweek last week and went down to Southern California. They were there for a couple of days and I came back over the weekend. This morning, we sent two paramedics out to the Salinas area for the hillfire that I believe started yesterday in that location. We don't have any apparatus out yet, but we're standing by if requested. The ladder truck, we're moving full steam ahead with that. We had a meeting two weeks ago with the manufacturer and sat down for about five hours and discussed specifications. And we should have that paperwork here for the city manager to execute hopefully this week. And the good news is we are under budget, so that's always good. And then we touched on it a little bit, the heat, it's dangerous out there this week. I hope everybody can stay hydrated, stay inside as much as possible. If you do have to go outside, try to get your activities done early in the morning. If you do have to go outside in the afternoon, try to limit it to shortest time period as possible, five, ten, fifteen minutes at the most. And just an update on what the city manager was speaking on with the outages. The last update does indicate that the outages would start no earlier than six o'clock tomorrow afternoon. So it is a good thing because at that point, temperatures are starting to drop. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Police Chief Gomez?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, buddy. Just a little bit on the personnel front. Last week, we hired two new reserve officers. And so we have, we have three now. We have one in training, he's in phase two now, the first one we hired. The other two will start. The good thing about COVID is they don't have jobs, so they're going to start level-one training right away. So that's pretty good. And I'm not sure if you're aware, in the past here, when I was hired here and even before, we, when we hire regular officers, we just pick our reserves. So it's a pretty good program they have here. The department, I think morale is up, since one of you always asked me this question at the department. And of course, I'm going to say that because I'm the chief of police. But 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 it is. I think people are happy there. They're working hard, which I'm going to show you some of the work here in a minute. But even with what's going on with the commission hearings, I think overall, people are happy at the department and they're doing a good job, they're working hard. So just talking about some of that work this morning at two fifteen AM, Mr. Jorge Cruz Ambreeze made the mistake of driving out of Circle K with his lights off. He got stopped and he had a loaded nine-millimeter in the car and lots of drugs. He had some promethazine, which is codeine syrup. He had Xanax, he had marijuana. So he was arrested on all those charges. And of course, they're not from Salma, they're, the whole carload was from Visalia. Next slide, Raina? Which we see a lot, it's Mr. Mr. Cruz Ambreeze there. There's all his gun, very nice gun there, I believe that's a Glock and all his drugs that he had. Next slide. These are his charges, loaded firearm in the vehicle, possessing loaded firearm not registered to him, transporting controlled substances, possessing controlled substances while armed, possession of Xanax, possession of codeine, that's a syrup, he was unlicensed, and of course, we had to get him for no headlights on. Next slide, please. This is a domestic violence case Saturday morning, and this gentleman Hector Contreras, he went and kidnapped his ex-girlfriend from a address in, in Selma, I don't believe it's that Cypress address, but it was an address in Selma. And he pulled a gun on her, she feared for her life, so she went with him but escaped later. He also pointed this gun at three other males that tried to stop him, it doesn't say that in there, but when the sergeant called me, he explained it to me. And he left, got away, he went to an address in the county, 8585 Dinuba, and four deputies met us there. And we located him on the porch, he was talking to the landlord there, I don't know why. But we arrested him immediately, of course, and that gun was just feet away from him, just inside the residence. So he got arrested for all those charges, next slide. This is Hector, and next slide. And I haven't seen this a lot in Selma, in Fresno, I saw it a lot. They commit robberies with these, they, people have been shot for pulling a fake gun. This looks just like the gun that I carry, it's a Glock, it looks like a Glock, and my off-duty gun's a 9mm Glock, looks just like this, but this is actually a BB gun. Yeah, that, that's what he was carrying and that he pulled on people, but you, you would think that's a real gun. And I didn't know they even made a BB gun that looks like that. But he went to Fresno County Jail, next slide, please. This is the pursuit that happened Saturday night. Angel Calderon was driving near Rose and Highland in a red Honda. Officers tried to stop him, he refused to stop, he, he tried to hit our Canaan Officer Holt, his vehicle. And then, of course, after he did that, a pursuit was initiated, we chased it just outside of Fowler. And what I've noticed here in Selma is that the officers, they know when to call off a pursuit. So if it's endangering public safety, they will call off the pursuit, and that's what they did outside of Fowler. But Air One was on it, Fresno PD's helicopter, and they continued to monitor it, and the deputies got involved, good teamwork here. And the deputies did legal intervention on a suspect car, which is, that's where we do a maneuver, where we turn into the vehicle and disables the car. It's called the pursuit intervention technique, so it was our case, so we stopped them, or they stopped them, and we, they turned them over to us, and we arrested them for all those charges there, battery on a peace officer, felony evading, that's the pursuit section, committing a felony while out on bond, he was out on felony bond, parolee at large, he was a one of parolee, possession of methamphetamine, possession of drug paraphernalia, and other vehicle code violations. And next page. That's Mr. Calderon. Next slide. And this is just, it's kind of interesting night, these two arrests, and I'll show you why in a minute. So we got a call on Orange, 2400 Block of Orange, for a man laying in the alley. So we arrived there into G. Robinson, he's laying in the alley, and he has a stun gun on him, and in his bag next to him, he has several weapons. He's on felony probation for assault with a deadly weapon, and he was charged with felony probation violation, and because he's a felon, he cannot possess a stun gun, so he is arrested on those charges, I'll show you those in a minute. The same night, Jennifer Martinez, she's from Sanger, she's arrested for DUI, and she's under the influence of drugs, prescription drugs, marijuana, and she's got a very nice gun on her too, a 40 caliber Smith and Wesson that was loaded. And next slide. This is Najib, I've never seen him here, but he is from Selma, next slide. And this is what he had on his person, the, the blue, the blue weapon there on the side, that's a stun gun. But in his pack, he had all of those, and that, that second weapon there with the long, looks like a screw, that was totally homemade, looks like a jail shank that he made, pretty dangerous, you know, thinking somebody's walking around Selma with all this stuff on him. The red one is a box cutter, and that last one is a knife, the tip is broke off, and you can't see it in this picture, but you could tell he's been sharpening that knife also, so he is arrested on those, and next slide. This is Jennifer from Sanger, and that's a, she's wearing a Bulldog sweatshirt. Last slide. And this is a gun she had, it is a 40 caliber, which is pretty big, that's what, what we carry, but that's the compact model, and it was loaded and, and her vehicle ready to go. So, yeah, a lot of guns, and then this isn't all of them, there are more, I just didn't put them in here, but the officer's getting a lot of guns off the street, and don't think for a second that isn't stopping shootings, because it absolutely is, the more guns we can get off the street out of gangsters' hands, it stops shootings out there, we haven't had any. Since I've been here, there's been one where somebody's been hit. There, there was one, we're in the Personnel Commission, not far from here on A Street, they shoot, they shot a car, and it's related to a stabbing that we had, where we arrested that suspect, but he lived there, his family lived in that house. But we really haven't had a lot of shootings, and as long as we can keep getting guns, it's, it's gonna stay that way, I believe. And that is all I have for the segment.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Keep up the hard work, keep up the good work. All right, council reports. Jim?
Okay, once again, I always thank the, the staff that worked for the city of Selma, and Chief, good job out there. And I see more patrol out there than the people, the, the, the people on the street are hearing about it, okay? Thank you, okay?
You're welcome.
And today, you know, I gotta give credit to the people who work out in the sun, and, and that's shame the group, you know? Today, it's been the last, this whole week, it's been hot, and I gotta give credit to the Public Works, working in the hot sun. They don't have the fortune to be in sites in a, in a city hall or, or in a patrol car in the, in the fire department, you know? At least the fire department got water, you got a water tank, you can sweat yourself down. These guys don't have that luxury, but I thank them, you know what I mean, I always thank those guys, but I always thank the people, again, that work for the city of Selma, because without you guys, it doesn't go, you know what I mean? You guys are the backbone of the, the city government, okay, thank you, guys, that's all I gotta say.
All right, you know what, I have to apologize, Jim, I had you start before, I forgot our Recreation Department, Mr. Kirchner, my apologies.
I did want to mention, last week, we did send out a, it's the 559 Euro project, and based on council's actions, about eight years ago, the Arch Council has the ability to review murals that are gonna go on businesses. So this is a mural that the Arch Council reviewed and it passed with the 92 vote on Thursday night. And this will be going on the east wall of the Lusseria Market right there on Witson. And so they're fundraising right now, and they will have this up, once they get going, they anticipate only taking about five weeks, once the funding comes in. I do want to also note that the next project they are recommending is at the Salazar Center, and I've emailed Carl Salazar, since it's named after the family, but that mural will go to the Arch Council, and because it's a city building, we will take that to the city council also for approval, and they are working on that proposal also now too. So, and the other thing I did want to report on is the Cooling Center, Fire Chief mentioned the heat. We were open since Saturday, Sunday, and tonight, we are opening on tomorrow and Wednesday. As of right now, Thursday and Friday look okay, 102, but we plan on going Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, again, five days in a row, until next Thursday, when it drops down to 101, so we're averaging between four to seven per night. And so it's, it's been very helpful for, for those who, who need the air conditioning, and that's it.
Thank you, and once again, my apologies for rushing past you.
Oh, no problem.
With that, we will return to council reports, and Councilman Robertson?
I want to say also, way to work with the other jurisdictions, Chief Gomez, thank you, thanks for getting those guns off the street, preventing shootings, really appreciate it. It's showing, people are recognizing that they're safer. Chief Peterson, thank you as well, thank you for sending the troops down to the lake fire, a couple people who came back, I understand. Thanks for having such excellence, I understand we were one of the few departments to send people, because we have such a great reputation, and that's doing no small part to your leadership. I wanted to thank County Supervisor Buddy Mendez in offering the county support to help our city in applying for that COVID, that CARES Act money. We can, he's offered the assistance, their administrative officer, Mr. Russo, to help our city with getting as much money and using it as creatively as possible, which we definitely need with all of the problems with businesses due to COVID and doing the, during the business slowdown. I think we need to examine and use all options. I gave blood at, in front of the Baskin Robbins last week on a really hot day, there was a really good amount of, large amount of donors, it turned out. I think we all heard about the young man in Clovis who's life was saved by the transfusions, and how important it is to give blood, and then giving blood saves lives, and we should all do it. For those of you who have been following our Second Chance Facebook page, our little kitten Zorro, who got the front leg amputated, just wanted to give you a status, he's doing much better after having his front leg amputated and surviving two hernias and post-operation infection. And thank you for everybody supporting, you know, it seems like a little thing, but you know, during such a crazy time, it's kind of nice to have something to pull for sometimes, and little Zorro's doing a good job and embodies that fighting spirit that I think we all have in our community, and it's, it's nice to have a success story there and to care for even the smallest parts of our community. I attended two CalVAN's meetings, one was the Finance Subcommittee meeting, the other was a regular board meeting. I read my requested agenda items for the Finance Committee into the agenda. I've been an independent voice on this board, asking for, requesting a plan of action to lower the deficit that has been a part of CalVAN's and should be turning around, and I will continue to, to do that. I'm continuing to update council and continuing to update Council of Governments Executive Director. I also want to say thank you to the city manager and staff for providing these edges or laptops to council, it's been a while, and it's nice to have these. I might think, you know, I'm in the middle ground between the paper and the laptop right now, but I think I'll get better at it, like my colleagues in, in using these and making it more efficient, and it'll be good that our city clerk can be more productive, so she doesn't have to always prepare that paper and, you know, take so much time preparing those big doorstopper packets for each meeting. And then finally, I want to say thank you to the Selma Healthcare District, they have a meeting tomorrow, and maybe in advance, I'm thanking them, but it looks like they may be providing nearly $11,000 in funding to the city to provide for senior meals in the future, so that's really good. And, you know, we have a great organization in the Selma Healthcare District that looks out for our little ones in our community, our small nonprofits, our underdogs, as we will. And it's, it's definitely nice to, to have that in our city.
Thank you, Councilman Robertson, Councilmember Trujillo?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, just checking. First of all, I'd just like to inform you guys, I attended the SKF board meeting this last Thursday. I'd like to thank Isaac, Isaac, thank you for notifying me in regards to SKF. I believe it's really important because of the fact of our infrastructure problems we have in our city, that you're pushing SKF. It's something that's very, very important, it's something that we need more clarification, we need to let the SKF board know, and along with Buddy Mendez, I've been talking to him for the last, since I've been on the board, and I think we're, we're moving in that direction. I also like to thank Shane, Shane, thank you for responding for a little concern, I never, I never call you, but I want to thank you, and I want to, want to let you know that I appreciate what, you know, at least you, you picked the phone up, and thank you for doing that. It's, there was something important to me, so aside of that, everything's good.
Thank you. Mayor Prokam-Gera?
Okay, I'd like to first start, I attended a Zoom meeting for the five cities, and it was a board meeting, we did talk about approving our logo, which is going to be the center point, that's what it's gonna be, going to be called, because we're no longer going to be five cities, where there's more cities than five, so it's going to be called Center Point. The only thing we're waiting for is just the mission version, so that's still coming, we had a table lit, there was a few words that just didn't really have that kick to it, so we're waiting for that. I think we're going to have an emergency meeting to go ahead and approve it, once it's all said and done, and this is really going to be vital for our city, not just our city, but our surrounding cities. It's really going to sell that, that Central Valley to these bigger companies that maybe don't want to be in a big city and are looking to come to the Central Valley, so that was great news. And then the other thing, I hate to be Debbie Downer, but I continue to get complaints, and I want to see what we could do about this illegal dumping that is happening in our city. They're dumping, you know, everything from furniture, couches, refrigerators, I mean, you name it, they're dumping it throughout the alleys, and some of these property owners are apparently being notified by our public or our code enforcer, which they don't feel they should be responsible, because it's, yeah, it's their property, but it's not them dumping it. You know, they've been residents of Selma for over 50 years, and they don't feel that they should be the ones responsible for it. So I see it, I mean, you mentioned earlier, Teresa, you're meeting with Cal, Caltrans, CHP, and Melissa Hurtado's representative, but what they're not seeing is the danger of that encampment that we have there. I understand they're giving you the okay to, to remove the ones off of floral, but Chief and I, I mean, we see it all the time, they just run in down to the encampment area, and they're safe, because they know they're not, we can't touch them. But all their junk is all throughout the freeway, and it's going into the freeway, and the underpass also. I mean, we were just going to Legends, and underpass, you saw, I mean, you name it, there was like chairs, those white plastic chairs, there was, I mean, you name it, there was all kinds of junk, and that's also going into our streets, which is gonna cause major accidents. So what I'm wondering is, what could we do now as a city, especially if we can get some assistance from Buddy Mendez to help us with that? I mean, the super, they have to know we have this, this is a crucial problem.
We are continuing to have that discussion with them, and we are meeting with Caltrans and the county, if not this week, next week, in order to talk about what can we do, what kind of assistance can they bring to the table so that we can help make the case that they need to clean up the entire encampment, not just the ones along
Right.
the exit to the freeway, but also in that triangle, because we, we all agree that it is a threat. Caltrans is looking for what they call their imminent threat level being very, very high, but we all are going to make the case that, you know, having any of the encampment remain there is, is a big threat. Because we, we, we see that it is, somebody's gonna get hurt, we don't want to see that happen.
Someone's gonna get killed, and, I mean, I hate to say it, but that's probably what is gonna happen, and maybe they're gonna open up their eyes, because it's very dangerous, I mean, I've heard numerous calls that they almost hit somebody on the freeway, you know, I mean, it's, it's very scary. But that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prokam-Gera. As for me, I attended Axos Santos Parade, if you don't know who Axos Santos is, he's a young man, I believe a little eight-year-old boy who's recovering from cancer, and after a long fight, he finally went home. So the Cancer Society, working with the Chamber and the city, put a really nice parade for that young man. And he was extremely happy and it was, it was, we wish him the best continued success as he does his fight for such a horrendous fight for such a child to have to go through. I've attended the weekly Cowal East calls with the city manager. I've also had a meeting with Dwight Nelson along with city staff to discuss several issues with them, concerns he had throughout our city. I met with New Caltrans Regional Director Diana Gomez with the city manager and Acting Councilman Trillo joined us in that meeting to talk about several issues and concerns with our freeways as well. And that's basically that all that I have. Oh, I do have one thing. Raina, could you share those pictures? Okay. And I believe there's a third picture too? Or is only, I only sent you two? Okay. I don't know if we realize it, but we're having an alarming rate of storm grain waller, storm grain issues where the imminent things are becoming unsafe. They're very dangerous and it's a problem that seems to be growing. So Isaac, I know you spoke on the last council meeting that we're wrapping up several road projects. Is there going to be any kind of discretionary money available for public work to start addressing these? Because in talking with Shane, it seems like we have a, a large number of these and, and the problem's only getting worse and we really have to set a plan to start addressing these.
Yeah. So moving forward into this year, obviously working through a couple of capital improvement projects already, but we would like to bring additional capital projects, capital improvement projects forward. A lot of street projects, we do have available funds at the moment. So we'll be looking at this project and some others that we'll actually be pulling together and doing quite a few. So we'll make sure to keep this in line. But again, we are looking for multiple projects to do outside of just grant work to be able to get these projects done. So we will keep this project in mind and it is on our radar for this.
Okay. Because I know like somebody could break their leg. These things are unsafe. You could fall through them. They're not very deep, but they're deep enough to where you could, like they say, break their leg or something.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is assess it more as a capital improvement project, one grand big project and take care of a lot of them.
Okay. And could you have, I know our Public Works Department is stretched thin. But when we talk about, we'll get an accurate number of just how many of these we have throughout town? Because I think it's a pretty high number.
Yeah, I believe Shane has that number already. He says, I think it's somewhere in the thirties that are having issues with. So again, we'll, we'll assess all of them and kind of come to what the game plan and how that gets done.
Okay. Do you know when you are going to have a report or some feedback for council on that?
Probably a couple, a couple of months. So I can pull multiple projects together. We can sit down with all staff. Look, but basically what we're going to do is going to look at our cap, our, our CIP, go back to that because we can look at our pavement management plan, look at which ones are in dire need with that low-end scoring process, but also look at the ones that get the most traffic. And because although it may be a low number, we want to assess the ones that will benefit the public the best. So we'll bring that back to you.
Okay. In the meantime, I don't know. There's probably is no discretionary money, but if we can at least have a mindful eye, should we come across some that we can at least address the ones that are most serious? I don't know what kind of, how much it costs to repair one of those things, but.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Shane.
In the meantime, I will, like I, like I spoke with you about, I will, me and my department will address the DI issues as we can. We don't have the staff to do it, but we will, we will keep making progressive efforts and, and repair as many as we can in the meantime. At this point, we've done, at, at this point, we've repaired four since I went out and spoke to you and showed you. And we will continue moving forward in that direction.
Okay. Could you keep track of the cost as far as labor and materials that, that this is costing us?
I can and I will.
Just in case we can interpret somewhere.
Okay, I can and I will, but no, no two of these DI's are the same. They're all, they're all specific individually to, to, you know, they're unique in themselves. I, I mean, I can't emphasize that enough. I've been out appearing on numerous occasions to evaluate these and there's no two the same. So.
All right. Well, as, as long as we have it more than our radar and then I, I know it's a difficult time, but we just, this problem seems to be growing. We gotta start addressing it, even if it's a slow process, we gotta start making headway into it. So I'm glad to hear that, that you're already doing that, Shane. So I really appreciate that.
No problem.
And that is basically all that I have. So with that, we'll move on to oral communications. Notice to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item which the council has jurisdiction. No actions or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issue raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. City clerk.
Mayor Frank, we have no callers on the line, nor do we have any email.
All right. Well, okay. With that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody be safe and have a good week.